Good evening. I would like to call to order the April 12, 2023 regular school committee meeting at 5:30 p.m. At this time, I will entertain a motion to convene an executive session, a non-public session, to discuss the approval of the March 8, 2023 executive session minutes and collective bargaining pertaining to the TTA teachers. The school committee will reconvene in open session after executive session.
I make that motion.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Caleb B. Johny Smith and seconded by Katie Anderson. And for a roll call vote, right now we are quorum. I understand Mr. Parsons and Mr. Russo are running a little late and will meet us in executive session. How do you vote, Mrs. Anderson?
Approve.
Aye.
Aye.
If you say aye, yeah. And Mrs. B. Johny Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well for vote three to zero to enter into executive session. So just for point of order, the school committee will reconvene in open session after the executive session at 6 p.m. For our first order of business to be our committee reorganization in public session and will be led by our superintendent upon our return. So thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, we will be reconvening our April 12, 2023 Regular School Committee meeting at 6:10 PM. If we could have everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by maybe our newest committee member, Ms. Anderson.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay, the April 12, 2023 reorganizational school committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22, Verizon Channel 34, or youtube.com/tuxburytv. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself.
Peter Johnson.
Okay, and if you could leave your name with Ms. Johnson at the table. Thank you. Okay, and congratulations Kate Anderson for her election to the school committee. I know I speak for all of us when I say that we're very much looking forward to working with you in your tenure on the school committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And at this time, I will entertain nominations for the position of Chairperson of the Tuxbury School Committee.
I'd like to make a nomination to reelect Bridget Garabedian as Chair of the School Committee.
I would second that.
I would be honored. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations for the position of Chairperson? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion that nomination for Chairperson be closed. Motion has been moved and seconded.
Our motion.
And seconded.
Thank you. On the name of Bridget Garabedian for Chairperson, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, congratulations, Ms. Bridget Garabedian, our school committee chairperson.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you for putting your faith and trust in me for another year. So that means a lot to me. I have other things that I could say later.
Are there any nominations for the petition of Vice Chairperson of the Tuxbury School Committee?
I will step up and nominate myself. I would love to take on that role and assist you in whatever needs to be done to move the committee forward.
Okay, Ms. Bea Joni Smith is nominated herself. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons.
And just for clarification, nominations can still...
Yes, they're still open. Are there any other nominations for the petition of Vice Chairperson? Is anybody else interested?
I will also throw my name in the hands as well, as Vice Chair.
Mr. Russo. Is there a second for Mr. Russo?
I'll second.
Okay. I'm not gonna lie, I'm not sure how to do this. Any thoughts on point of order for this?
I would maybe consider, you know, maybe just reflecting on, you know, the nature and sort of what the intentions are maybe. And I don't know if that's the right way to...
So I guess, yes, with two points of order, I guess we would open up for discussion if anybody has anything that they'd like to add.
I think when I nominated myself, I think I said I look forward to, you know, the potential to learn, take on the role, additionally help in whatever comes up that needs to be done to continue to move the school committee forward, learning the roles and the responsibilities, and seeing myself in this position and planning for the future. I continue to plan to be here for as many, I guess, terms as I am able to, and would appreciate the opportunity to learn this role as closely as I can, as best I can. I didn't prepare anything because I didn't know this was going to come to this. All right, Rich?
Yeah, no, I'll maybe just add, well, first of all, you know, I appreciate the words, Ms. Bea Joni Smith, and I do as well also sort of look at it as a standpoint of trying to sort of look ahead, the future. I do look at, as the Vice Chair, potential, you know, as a stepping stone, you know, no one knows, you know, how long you have on the committee. Any one of us can choose to rerun, but at the end of the day, there's no guarantee that you'll be successful as we've seen in the past with other folks that have come before us. So I look at this as sort of a way to sort of groom, you know, someone, you know, a second person on the committee, and I as well also plan on intending to rerun myself, you know, in the, well, two years' time, I guess now. So I look at it as a potential to continue to further myself in support for the committee.
Okay. Any other conversation or do you vote to vote? Okay, so now with a roll call vote, we will look for majority. So with Mr. Russo and Mrs. Bea Joni Smith both in consideration for the position of Vice Chair, Mrs. Anderson, how do you vote?
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith.
And Mr. Parsons?
Ms. Bea Joni Smith.
Okay, Mr. Russo?
Mr. Russo.
And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
I'll vote myself.
And with three to one, I will also go with Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, and congratulations.
Thank you, I do appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and at this time, I'll entertain nominations for the petition of Clerk for the Tuxbury School Committee.
So I would like to nominate, you know, I will also say that I know it's tradition. It is a challenging role. I don't think people appreciate that the clerk does a significant amount of work in executive session and works with Gail to make sure that the notes are accurate and appropriate and documented. I did learn a lot from doing that role, and I think as much as it's hard to do it first, I think you do get a lot out of it. So I would like to nominate Katie Anderson for Clerk.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
And are there any other nominations for the petition of Clerk? Okay, seeing none, I will move to all in favor for Katie Anderson by saying aye for the position of Clerk.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And seeing none opposed, congratulations to Katie Anderson.
Thanks. I'm not gonna lie, there was a form, Gail gave me a really nice form so that it was easy to fill out, but I think it confused me at the same time. Thank you for bearing with me. Okay, moving forward with our points of order, I would like to first ask everybody to join in a moment of silence. We have two moments that I would like to recognize. One would be remembrance and recognition of the lives that were lost at the Covenant School on March 27th, and then also for a beloved school community member, Rita Boudreaux, who was an aide in our school for 20 years at the Heathbrook School, who passed away in March of this year as well. So if everybody could please join me in recognition for a moment of silence.
Thank you very much. And I also would like to welcome you, Katie Anderson, to the committee. Congratulations on your election. It's nice to have you. We had a nice day, just to share with people. We had a, I called it kind of an onboarding day where we spent some time, we went to the Heathbrook School, we were able to tour, meet with Principal Garrish, we toured at the Center Elementary, and thank you to the principals, Mrs. Garrish, Mr. Harding, Mr. Rogers for their hospitality. Back to Central Office, we met with Mrs. McDermott, Mrs. Terry Oregan was unavailable that day, but it was a very nice day. So thank you for your time, and also to Gail for helping to facilitate all the packets and information and things that we were able to share with Katie. So I just want to let people know that it's quite an event. And moving on, also thank you to Deb Mugford for providing her lunch. Yes, we have no recognitions for today, and that brings us to our student council report, but I don't see why we're here tonight. Okay, and then for presentations, Mrs. Terry Oregan, I'll turn this over to you.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. This is a lengthy presentation, but one of great value to the district. This is a presentation of both our comprehensive district review, which is facilitated through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. You're gonna hear a lot of acronyms tonight, Ms. Anderson, DESI, CDR, AIR. I want to just tell you a little bit about the CDR. Districts typically go through the CDR based on accountability criteria, based on a potential need. Because the accountability criteria was put on pause for a couple of years, DESI randomly chose districts to participate in the comprehensive district review. That occurrence, that happened for us. We were informed in 2021, this was a full year review and upload of our district systems, processes, documentation that culminated in AIR, the American Institute for Research, coming into our district, conducting interviews, verification, if you will, a cross referencing of all of the documents we uploaded, all of the things we said they verified through interviews and observations with multiple stakeholders. So while I'm here alone giving you the summary of this very lengthy report, and if you didn't receive the full report, Ms. Anderson, we'll make sure you get that as well. Did you get that?
I didn't, I do, in my email.
Okay, there's a lot, so I'm gonna try to summarize, as I said. I'm summarizing the report, but it's really important to note, this was a full district lift. This really included every single member of our district leadership team, our administrative team, many, many members of the staff, town lead people, yourself, some of you were part of these interviews and research gathering. And then let me just give a shout out to three of our district administrators who captained this initiative, Terry Garrish, Principal of the Heathbrook School, Alexis Bosworth, Principal of the Doing School, and former Principal of the North Street, Pernima Di Marius. What they did was kept us all on track. We had a lot going on, which I'll bring up a little bit later in the report, but the CDR focuses on six key standards that DESI has identified as being the most important components of district effectiveness. What we're doing with this significant report is also sharing out with you my entry plan, entry findings, where the Assistant Superintendent and I went out and talked with several stakeholders to see, you know, what's great in the district and how we can improve. So this will be a summary of both of those events. As I said, there are six standards, you'll see on the table contents, we're gonna do a little bit about the overview and profile of our district, the six standards, some classroom observation data, and then those district, that entry plan and entry findings. So let me just review the CDR overview. There were 20 hours of AIR interviews done in May of 2022, as a reminder, after the giant mountain of documentation and evidence gathering that we did throughout that whole school year. There were 65 stakeholders interviewed that represented a variety of stakeholder groups, as I said, from school committee members, town leads, town manager, police, fire, teachers, students, family members, and there were also 60 observations done in classrooms throughout all seven of our schools at the time, we were at seven schools, led by the AIR audit experts using a research-based teach-stone class protocol tool. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of overview of our district profile. There's a lot of information that you can get here on our school report card, and on our school and district profile on DESI, but you can see in the full report, they noted our October 2021 enrollment data. That was the data they had at the start of that school year. I just wanted to share with you our current enrollment. Just in a trend, I want to tell you our enrollment in Tuxbury in total has been decreasing. In the five years prior to the AIR visit, you know, we saw over 350 student enrollment decrease from 2017 to now. We have seen a decreasing enrollment in total, and a little bit of a blip now in our earliest learners, which is promising for, you know, student enrollment here in Tuxbury Schools. I just want to highlight a little bit of some notable enrollment criteria that you should know on Slide 6. While we're seeing some of our enrollment go down, we're While we're seeing some of our enrollment go down, we're seeing certain populations of students increase, including our first language, not English, families, our English language learners. We're seeing that go up easily at least a percent a year. And certainly our students with disabilities at the time they were here was about 18%, and we're seeing now in 2023, 19.8%. So our numbers are somewhat compatible with the state in some areas and in other areas lower, but definitely growing in those student populations. When we look at the diversity of our student population, equally each year, we're seeing these different categories of diversity increase. And on the contrary, so if we're seeing our African American, our Asian, Hispanic, and Native American population, and then our multi-race population increase, we're seeing a decrease in our population of white students. So the diversity or the face of our classroom is changing quite a bit in Tewksbury as well. It's not noted here, but the link to our school and district profile is there that you can click and research all of our district profile until you get just enough of it. But one notable piece of data that you should hear is that our out-of-school suspension rates have decreased, while our in-school suspension rates or discipline have slightly increased since we've come back to full in-person. But we're keeping our kids in school. Our graduation rate has roughly stayed the same from 93.4% to 93.2% in 2022. 2021, 93.4; 2022, 93.2. And our dropout rate was slightly up in 2022. We had three students in 2021 and six students drop out in 2022. Again, we do attribute some of this to the time we were out of school and learning loss and the difficulty students were faced with coming back. We did have in 2022, five students doing their fifth year here in high school, and we want to keep them for that fifth year and make sure that they graduate. So I did not spend a lot of time on our MCAS accountability. The appendix to that report has all the data you'd like to see. We've already done a report in front of you. But I thought it was important to note with our changing diversity, changing enrollment and population, we're tracking those other important data points as well. One of the standards that we're going to start with is the leadership in government. And please, I'm going quickly because this is lengthy and I'm trying to summarize, but you know, raise your hand or stop me if there's something I'm just glossing over too quickly. You have had the report, but still. So on our leadership in governance standard, that really speaks to yourself as a committee, our district and school leadership. So I'm going to just highlight some key words that really stood out for us. Collaborative working relationships with stakeholders, transparency, clear lines of internal communication, use of disaggregated data, autonomy, I would say some, autonomy for school leaders in scheduling and budgeting to support improvements. And then on the next page, clearly defined district school improvement plans, representative school councils, annual training for them. And then we can see the budget development. You've seen it live in person for the last few months, really strong budget development process. Some areas we know, and you know, I'm pleased to say you've already even addressed in some ways, write in your own school committee governance, an evaluation process of the superintendent's performance. Keep in mind, they were here last year. They were, they received data and interviewed in spring of 2022. You've already pushed forward the full DESI evaluation process in an adjusted timeline. System for collective bargaining, again, when AIR was here, we were in full negotiations with seven different collective bargaining units. And we had two in mediation, well, the TTA, one unit, but two different work groups in mediation. So we know we'll be facilitating that process again into next school year. We've already seen improvements in the communication processes between teacher and school district leadership through district newsletter, the school newsletters, and definitely our calibration approach. I say ours as in the district's calibration and meeting approach with our district leadership team, so that our principals go back and our directors go back to their relative staff with the same communication and messaging. So I just wanted to highlight some of those and note in budget development, funds allocated for staffing resources to improve outcomes for all students. You've heard and seen that in the support staff we've added in the last year, actually two years, and continue to support for our students. I'll get into that a little bit later. So I want to pause here on leadership and governance. When we were told we were going to be participating in the CDR, a word that did not come to mind for me was serendipitous. It was not, I'm going to be honest, I was very unhappy. In fact, I asked Chris Malone at the time, I want to call DESI. I want, they need to know what we're, what's going on here in Tewksbury. Why were we randomly chose? We don't have the capacity to do this. I want to remind you in the year 2021, just revisit where we were at. We were just coming back to in-person learning for all students, as was everyone else, and I get that. We were fully immersed in a new school building project and all that had to, all that needed for planning. We had seven collective bargaining agreements to achieve, and as I said, one with the teachers and aides in mediation and a work to rule. Concurrently, we are participating in a required tiered focus monitoring process, and that audits our special ed programming, civil rights programming, and English learner programming, that going on at the same time. I was named as the interim superintendent without an assistant superintendent by my side. I was running a super, you were running a superintendent search that spring to come up with your full-time superintendent for the next school year, and I was conducting a search for an assistant superintendent, a high school principal, an assistant director of special education, the administrative team to the CE, to the Center Elementary School, and then subsequently Heathbrook principal, Doing principal, and then some. So serendipitous was not what I was thinking. This was not something I was pleased that we were being forced to participate in. But you know, having the luxury of reflection and this monumental task being done, because done is really good, right? And getting this data back, I would say now, as a new superintendent and a new leadership team, this data that we have and then looking forward to a district strategic plan is very serendipitous that we have this now from an objective party and with some really good data points to intersect with our entry findings. So I say that because it's important. This didn't just happen. It wasn't easy. There was a lot, and I'm really proud of what it showed us. So I want to go on to standard three and four almost together because this is the area that I looked at and saw the most recommendations within the CDR, which is around curriculum and instruction and assessment. That's the instructional cycle. That's the meat and potatoes of what we do in our classroom every day. And I would hope for the most recommendations and areas for us to improve what we do for students. There's significant strengths here. We see teachers participating in the selection process of our resources. We are aligned to our academic standards and our state Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. We have project-based learning that's engaging in the classroom and certainly career pathways and dual enrollment. You've heard a lot about that already at these meetings that meet the needs of our student curriculum and instruction. Some real big areas for growth are in the greater transparency and selection process. You are going to hear about that in a little bit on the ELA selection of our new curricular resource. Vertical alignment within the grade levels. The Center Elementary School is really helping us there. We have all our second, third, fourth grade teachers in one building. That leads to better alignment and greater fidelity to those mass curriculum standards and the frameworks and the overviews we have produced as a curriculum team. We want to make sure we're staying true to the time on learning, providing culturally relevant pedagogy that really reflects our students' interests and motivation, and strategy to increase the quality of feedback and instructional dialogue. I'm going to talk about that when we get to the classroom observations. Supports for RLs, and then a focus was presented at the last meeting on dual enrollment and higher learning opportunities for our students. So I just want to say in curriculum instruction, we encourage differentiation. You're going to hear that word a lot, and stop me if you need that clarified in any way. But we know that hands-on instruction, differentiated instruction for different types of learners definitely increases engagement. That'll be a focus of how we improve our instructional program moving forward. Assessment is part of teaching and learning. And sometimes people think of assessment as that one big test or the MCAS or that summative benchmark. And truly, what this is talking about is how do we use little bits? That's called formative assessment along the way to adjust and differentiate that instruction. It sounds really easy to say. It sounds like an easy practice, but what we're seeing is that the CDR really recognized our strength in our culture of collecting and discussing data and our availability of the variety of assessments we make available to us at Google Class, Otis, DIBELS, et cetera. What they're saying an area of growth is that timely use of the data, the day-to-day use of data, or right in the moment to adjust and modify. So in order to properly differentiate for student needs, we need to be better in that real-time data discussion. Our staff and district school and classroom levels use the data. We have really strong PLCs, but we want to help and support our teachers in how they do, not only use the data, but then what do they do next? That's really that observable impact model we've been talking about now for a couple of years in the training we've been doing on that. So sharing results, the systems that we have in place like Otis and DIBELS now allow some group sharing of data that really help grade levels and teams adjust instruction. So we have the mechanisms in place. We need to provide our staff more support in using the data for instructional decision-making and modifying instruction. Again, this is our observable impact model. Our teachers are getting really good at it. We're really proud of the growth that they've made in that area. All right, human resources and professional development standard. Again, you see, you know, some really nice strengths that have been boiled down out of the report. We have a great system to maintain and report employment-related information. I just want to share with you that Tewksbury is above the state in maintaining professional level staff. We're at 91.4% of our staff is experienced, a professional level teacher. We maintain, our staff stays, which is nice. Our hiring systems allow our principals to select and assign staff to individual building needs, and we have a district-based long-term planning for staffing needs, much like our capital planning. We plan for staffing needs throughout the year. Now, some areas of growth here are strategy to diversify our staff. We really do want to look at diversifying our staff in multiple ways to represent the students in front of them. In particular, in particularly, you know, even more males, some more male teachers in our elementary schools. Our young students who are males, it's nice when they have teachers that recognize the needs that, you know, males are having in the classroom and so on and so forth. So we're seeking out other venues for job postings and ways to encourage diversification of our staff. Our evaluation systems are used consistently. We also have a mentoring program in place, which is really the keystone to professionally developing our brand-new teachers. Our administrative evaluation goals and sources of evidence were an area of growth that the CDR shared. I want to make note to you, and you'll see this in the summer, Ms. Anderson, our administrative goals are clearly created and in sync to advance our district goal in our strategic plan. And I'm not sure CDR understood that, but that is something we'll be more explicit with when we share with you our goals in the summer. Our professional development on the new curricula, we're already engaging in that, especially when it comes to our new K through four math and K through six ELA. Teachers' input into professional development offerings, you'll see suggestion Lori and I have for that moving forward into next year, and teacher leadership opportunities. Like we retain our teachers, we also retain, many of the teachers who are in leadership positions stay in them. They enjoy them. We don't have a lot of turnover in department heads, team leaders, PLC facilitators, and that's something, it's going to sound sort of like a double-edged sword. We want to see new perspectives and teachers join in to those teacher leadership roles. Now, that doesn't mean that the ones that are doing them are not doing a good job, but we do want to make sure we're providing teacher leadership opportunities for as many of our teachers as possible. So we have talented teachers that really bring those roles to life in our schools, and we certainly hope new teachers will raise their hand to participate in leadership roles as well. Another area of administrative professional development focus is giving effective and productive supervisory feedback to teachers all along the way, much like formative assessment is for the student in the classroom, so that instruction can be modified. We'll be looking at growing our administration and director formative feedback processes. Judgment, you know, can be good or bad, but if you're not giving effective and productive recommendations towards improving and growing as an educator, then the judgment's only heard as I did a good job or a bad job. It's about growth. All right. And when we look at our student support standard, this is an area we are shining in and showing extreme growth in the Tewksbury Public Schools. Most of our students responded that they felt very welcomed and that their teachers cared about them. Many of our students are joined numerous clubs, athletics, and we're really pleased that we brought a comfort dog on board to keep them comfortable all day. And they certainly noted in their vocal survey, the vocal survey is a survey that's done through the state, that they, we rated actually higher than most districts in the state regarding our SEL focus and practices. Sounds really good to hear. You can see our students feel welcomed. We have a safe and supportive environment, and the students feel they belong. And in our 2020 TFM, this is another area that we were rated really high in, which was our tiered systems of support, our support curriculum resources, and our student success team approach. This is where we use data to really try to make, or provide interventions for students that need them. One area of growth is a number of quality of special education support staff to address student needs. This here is where we analyze what are our students' needs through that annual budget process, as well as the data we're collecting through new systems we're using, like the DESA SEL and Second Step or DIBELS. So what I can tell you in Tewksbury, and while it never feels enough, we are very, very rich in student support staff positions. For example, every single school has a dedicated, we call them case managers, they're called team chairs in other districts, full-time, that's their role. Every single one of our schools have a variety of counseling roles, and those roles could be school psychologists, school adjustment counselor, guidance counselor, licensed social worker. Every school has more than one person in those roles. Every one of our schools have access to, we have a support team of BCBA's and RBTs, registered behavior technicians. BCBA's support our teachers to support our students. The RBT supports the individual student so they can regulate and be successful in school. We have OTs, PTs, SLPs, SROs, academic coaches. We have really, through your support and through grant dollars, really supported these student support staff roles. Where we struggle, like many other districts, is having the, or let me just say this, as many student support aides as we need on a regular basis. That's a fluid need. And much like many districts, we've been challenged in acquiring all the aides that we do need. They're, they do God's work, I will say, and support our teachers and support our students in the classroom. And that's an area of noted, I guess I would say, improvement or growth that we need to see, or hope to see. So several stakeholders reported that the district would benefit from a more robust system for identifying and addressing students' academical, behavior, academic behavioral and social emotional needs. We agree, and that's why we implemented the DESA SEL and Second Step. The faster turnaround on DIBELS data, our staff is getting that data, you know, in a day's time now. We are bringing in the K4 standards-based reporting process. We're a standards-based district, and we don't report on the standards to parents. That's something that you'll hear more about at our next meeting. Okay. And now, financial and asset management. What can I say here? We have a really concise and accurate budget documentation and budget process. It really focuses on our needs, based on student enrollment, based on student data, based on our capital needs as well. We use all of our available funding, that's for sure, and our grants to make sure we're providing, and we thank you again because, you know, you support the budget that we put in front of you. We have efficient business office systems and a very appropriate preventative maintenance system. Let me just say, our town's greatest asset are our schools, and we know that, and the town supports us greatly. town supports us greatly on that, the town manager as well as the finance committee. Most recently, the finance committee also implemented, I guess you would say, a rating system. We know we still have two very old schools in our Wynne and our Ryan, are not getting any younger, so they did a rating system through the business manager and our maintenance foreman, John Marchand, asking to just rate with a grade, you know, each of the major systems, whether it's, you know, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, rate them, so we not only know where we need to react to quickly, but sort of where is that going to fall in the future. So the district business manager leads a very well-oiled financial management process, and our school leaders, as well as our monthly meetings, really focus on where we are with that spending and how, and we're always looking ahead and adjusting and balancing our financial needs. So those were the standards. I'm going to now move into the section on classroom observations, and I'm just going to give you a little background, and I really thank you for your just patience and attention. There's a lot here, so again, slow me down if I'm going too fast. In K through three, you see there are three domains and 10 dimensions, 10 classroom dimensions related to those domains. In grades four through 12, there are the same three domains, but 11 dimensions related to the domains plus student engagement. So let me just tell you a little bit about those domains. First, emotional support. This describes the social-emotional functioning of the classroom, including the teacher-student relationship and the responsiveness to SEL needs. Classroom organization describes the management of student behaviors, time and attention in the classroom. The instructional support domain describes the efforts to support cognitive and language development, including cognitive demands of the assigned tasks, the focus on higher-order thinking skills, and the use of process-oriented feedback. So that's the process of achieving a standard versus just simply the grade, achievement grade. So let's talk a little bit about what a low-range, mid-range, and high-range score means. A low-range score means the dimension was never or really evidenced in all those observations of that grade band. The mid-range score is, means that it was evident but not exhibited consistently, and a high-range score means that the dimension was reflected in all or most of the classroom activities. So we're going to go look at the K through five classroom observations, and I tried to give you just a little color coding here, green, you know, being areas of strength, and yellow areas of our desired focus for the, not only the data given, but areas that we seek to improve as well. So, you know, we see some strengths in the emotional support domain, you know, to the degree that a perfect high score was here in negative climate. That's a negative or a reverse score, meaning there was no evidence of a negative climate there. What we see here in an area we'd like to focus on a little is that regard for student perspectives. That means the degree that the teacher places an emphasis on student interests, motivation, and student point of view. Okay? So that one is in the lower mid-range or mid-mid-range. Where we saw significant strengths was in the classroom organization domain, and that is, you can see behavior management, productivity. With an area of focus we'd like to hone in on a little bit, and that is the instructional learning format, engaging students' interests and their abilities to differentiate the instruction. That's what we're going to see really crop up a little bit in the instructional support domain. So each of those dimensions will demand our focus in K through five into the strategic plan. And what we're seeing is here, these are the efforts to support cognitive and language development, as I said, the higher-order thinking skills, and certainly that process-oriented feedback. An area we really, really want to focus in, and I would call it an area of priority, is that language modeling. The good news is, the new ELA program you're going to hear about in a little bit really focuses on that. So we already know some of the initiatives we had in play here. We knew this was an area, not only for our English language learners, but every learner, every developing learner. All right, so that instructional support domain is an area of focus for K through five. If we go to six through eight, we're going to see similarly that we have some, you know, pretty good mid-high-range ratings in the emotional support domain. We want to see that area improve, especially in that area regarding student perspective. Again, that emphasis on student interest and point of view. We have strengths, high strengths again in that classroom organization domain. And our greatest area of need once again is in the instructional support domain, capturing that instructional dialogue here in the middle-school grades really means capturing purposeful use of content-focused discussions with not only the student and teacher, and that means that versus, that's in contrast to the one-word answer or the one-student answers, rich discussion, content-rich dialogue, not only teacher to student, but student to student, really mining and chaining ideas together to develop deeper understanding. So if we switch to the high school, it's very much similar to the middle grades, and what we see here again is that a little bit lower rating on the regard for student perspectives in the classroom observations that were had. So again, an area of need that we see district-wide, area of strength we see district-wide would be those classroom organization domain, again, a perfect score on negative climate, and then the greatest domain need is in that instructional support with the lowest score in this case here, analysis and inquiry, which would feed into that formative assessment piece we talked about, and then those rich class discussions to really engage students' deeper understanding. So if we look to the overall summary here, what's really nice to see is that no negative climate was observed in all of our grade bands. Classroom organization is positive and strong and strengthening in different grade levels, I would say, stronger. We know our focus areas need to be that regard for student perspective, which is really another term you'll hear us call student-centered education, where students are at the center of what we are doing and discussing, so that they, so we are gaining greater engagement that leads to greater understanding and certainly higher student achievement. Okay, so now I'm going to shift to our entry plan and our entry finding summary. How do we gather the information for the district vision and the vision of a learner? Well, we had many live sessions with a variety of different focus groups across the district. I'm not going to read the list to you. We had discussions with them. We listened to them. We asked them questions. We also surveyed larger group feedback for our faculty and staff and our parents and community through both paper and digital surveys, and we had significant professional development time, which allowed our staff to give us continued feedback on those four different sessions around the district vision and then our vision for our learners district-wide. So I'm going to focus on at least four of the areas where we sought out some feedback, and what I did was I color-coded consistency in those areas across these different stakeholder groups. So you can see our, you know, our parents in our town, community members, our students and alumni, and then our staff. So parents and guardians, students and alumni and staff. And you can see that there's quite a long list of what people feel is going very well and what they're most proud of and what our greatest successes are. And I just really want to highlight, it was said in so many ways, but our high-quality teachers, our caring teachers, our teachers that make us feel good about coming to school every day was really a highlight in every group. Our curriculum advances. Every stakeholder is noticing when we're providing better instructional resources and better course offerings. They really are noticing that. And then you can see a lot of this has to do with, with social-emotional needs, safe schools, sense of belonging, sense of community, that we're inclusive, and that idea of building relationships was very consistent across the board. You'll see some nuances that were a little bit different in each of the groups, but I wanted to bring together the consistency because that really helps lead us down the path of, you know, what we, the next question was, what must we preserve at all costs then? If these are the things we're most proud of, what must we preserve? So we again saw that, you know, that student safety, sense of belonging, sense of community, community traditions, you know, even in a town where traditions run so deep, people really want to also feel they belong as part of that and that their voice is heard. So we saw those, that consistency across stakeholder groups. We have a very proud and active town who support our schools on behalf of our students. So, you know, we know that, again, you'll see just different nuances, and we tried to cluster these in categories, but extracurricular opportunities, I mean, our, when I say that we have very rich traditions, those extracurricular opportunities are one of those, and that's something that came out loud and clear, especially amongst our students. Students really appreciate the free lunch and breakfast. We're hoping we can preserve that. I mean, that really, I think almost every student said that, which was really in-person learning, parental involvement and choice. We hear that from our parents, too. So different nuances, but I think it's clear they want our students to feel good about being in school. You know, we know that happy adjusted students make for better achieving students, and safe students certainly make for better achieving students as well. If we look at what should be the number-one goal, again, there's a strong priority on our students' happiness, their belonging, their being part of a community, and then we saw across the board that people in every stakeholder group want curriculum. And then remember that curriculum is everything in the teaching, learning, and assessment process that's inclusive and differentiated, that really isn't one-size-fits-all for every single student in Tewksbury. And that really does match what we saw in the CDR. So if we go to, how should we improve the student learning experience? Again, you're going to see some of the same consistent feedback that we receive from the different groups. We heard loud and clear from many of the groups that they want college and career planning, and when they say college and career planning, we mean experiential opportunities for students, especially in the middle and high school grade levels. Experiences that include hands-on experiences, internships, exposure and planning towards life after high school, and you'll see in the next page when we get there that that was something that came out loud and clear through our town leadership as well. Again, differentiation and inclusion, a really strong focus the district is going to be building. And then homework policy update. This isn't unique to Tewksbury, and I will tell you, it's not just students whining. I think this is very much connected to the stress and social-emotional needs of our families, not just our students, but our families. And really, what is the value? We've started that discussion with high school students. What do we need to do to adjust that in reaction to where our students and families are today and not in the past? So you can see those similarities here. I just want to talk about the senior project. Our kiddos at different grade levels are asking for experiences like that, not necessarily a full-blown leave high school for weeks, but opportunity to explore what it means, you know, for life after school and start that earlier at the Ryan, which is a requirement, by the way, of our district that we have just not had the capability to do, that we're, we need to explore further. All right, and then if we look at that final group, so I just clustered them together. So this was our town department leads specifically, and like town manager, police, fire, our other department leads, our Rotary Club and the business leadership in Tewksbury, and our senior citizens. What did they respond with? Well, we can see that they felt our, what our successes were, and everybody highlighted student safety. Very proud, and we're very fortunate that we are prioritizing safe schools with the support of the town, and certainly the support our town has given and the resources noted often. What should be preserved? Well, again, traditions were very noted, especially among folks who have been in this town for a long period of time. They want our students actively engaging in whatever those traditions or clubs and activities are, because they know that it's so important, and many of these folks were parents of kids that were once in our school and realize just how important those traditions and keeping those things going in town are. Definitely the sense of belonging, sense of community. And when we get to our goals for improved student learning, most of what we heard from our town leaders, our senior citizens, and our business people, were all around developing the student attributes, the learner. The content goes away. We know that, right? Students don't remember the content. They remember how they were built up as a learner and how they felt at school. So while they really focused on postgraduate planning for every student, they asked us to really focus on building the learner, developing the learner. All right, we're almost done here. When we asked our district, and this is all stakeholders, if students felt a sense of belonging, now this was a multiple choice, so we could gather some data, quantifiable data. You know, we saw differing opinions here. Our staff most positively answered yes, they felt students felt a sense of belonging, they're working hard towards that. Our parents then said, you know, about 80% felt that they, they felt their sense of belonging, but 30% of our students said they did not. This is an area we need to explore further and continue to have dialogue with our students to really just detail out a little bit of what they mean, you know, where, how is that their reality? What does that mean to our students? If we look at whether our students feel respected, and we asked in their class and at school, we see a little bit more consistent answer here. I would also say, though, 20% said no, and we need to know why that is, because, you know, obviously belonging and respect don't mean the same thing to students, and I don't think it means the same thing to us all the time, so what does that mean? When we asked our district how they preferred to receive communication from the district, you'll see the blue section here is email, and it is still the most preferred mode to receive communication from us. Social media, well, the district newsletter came in second across the board, but you can see with our students, social media and district newsletter were pretty neck-and-neck, and then social media did not come out as a preferred mode with the adults that we surveyed. All right, and as you know, we also were seeking feedback on what should be the vision of our learners, what attributes, what should be the key attributes we develop and prioritize for every learner, K through 12. The, we have a nice long list here of 14 attributes that came out as most important, and when we did follow-up, that PD in time with our staff and our administrative team, we boiled it down to three priority areas that we felt met the feedback we're receiving from stakeholders as well as the needs our staff were giving us. So you can see that the top three attributes we continue to develop in our vision of a learner plan is effective communicator, collaborative learner, and creative problem solver. Our next step, if we go to the next slide, is to develop three separate plan documents. And remember, we're in an observable impact process, and that means if we were to see students demonstrating effective communication at the very highest level of proficiency in our classes, what would we observe them doing and demonstrating? And what we're now doing is building a list of these standards, student standard one, student standard two, around communication. We would also ask, what would we see educators demonstrating and doing at the highest proficiency level to build that effective communication attribute in students? So we have, if students were going to be asking for help and communicating their need, then teachers would be providing multiple opportunities for students. So we have a parallel standard that will go from students would be demonstrating and we'd be observing, to educators would be demonstrating and we would be observing. And then we would have a repertoire of activities and assessments that would parallel meeting those, those standards. We're building these plans for all three attributes. The summer of 2023, we expect to complete the VOL plans for all of those attributes, and then school year '23-'24 will kick off with sharing them, training our staff further, implementing, observing for impact, analyzing adjustments. So it'll be a cycle. How are we doing with this? Okay, so what did we learn? I'm not going to read through all of these bullets, but clearly, Tewksbury is a very proud and very supportive community on behalf of our students and our schools. Our current Our current, Kate, you weren't here when we did this whole dance, maybe you watched on TV, but we have one leg in, a current district strategic plan, while we are building a new strategic plan with all the input from the stakeholder group. And that's why I say this is very serendipitous. We now also have the CDR. Because we not only have our feedback from stakeholders, we have our CDR to really intersect and bring those goals together. So, you can see, we're already doing quite a bit that address the areas of suggested growth and the areas our feedback, stakeholder feedback gleaned for us. So, what do we do next? As I said, we merge our current district goals, the CDR, continued stakeholder feedback to develop an updated plan moving forward. We want to include those areas of suggested growth. And if you go to the next page, how do we do that? I'm not reading through all the bullets. I, you know, we reviewed this, but stop me if there's anything you have a question about. How do we do that? Well, we start with building a new district strategy and a plan that accompanies that. You've heard us talk about the TPS strategy. We need to, if we need to update that, that's what we'll do, led through focus groups throughout now and through the summer. If we update that strategy, those components should include our core values and beliefs, that theory of action, one to three strategic objectives. It's not a document that's this big. It's one to three big objectives with then some action plans associated. We will be asking for both an internal and external team to help us do that work. We have our district leadership team, but over the summer, we'll be looking for a couple each of teachers, staff, parents, students and community members to help us finalize that plan that we can implement for next school year. So, first of all, I just really want to thank you. This, your attention's been fantastic. Maybe you zoned out once or twice, but it's a lot of information to digest, but very well worth it. I also hope you're equally proud of the work that every single member of our TPS community is doing to really strengthen the student experience and that you see this, these areas of growth as opportunities to not only capitalize on what we do well, but get better at what we do. So, thank you.
And I'm certainly here for any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Mrs. B. Joni Smith, I'll start with you.
So, I think that it's the summary, both the summary and then the actual packet itself, the district review is very detailed. I think it's a really good look into what's being done and the perspectives of all the various stakeholders that were involved throughout the process. I think anyone that looks at it can probably see room for improvement, but also some really great areas for success and celebration for what we've been doing and what we can show that we've done since, even before having any of that information, which was really great. So, for folks who wanted to find that detailed review, is it on the district website or is that something that they can access if they were interested?
Yes, both of these, the full report as well as the summary. Yes, I will also say this, when we meet with the town white pack, I'm going to get this out to the town white pack in advance. I'd also like to meet with the CPAC with all of this information and just ask, you know, with all of the recommendations and all of the things we're doing and want to do, we want their, as I said, we want continued stakeholder feedback. Because the strategic plan, I mean, this data is great, but now you build the plan from it and tweaking that will require some staff, parent and some of the pack input.
That's great. So, I did want to note a couple of things that I saw that just high level, just to keep in the back of our minds. One was the student perspectives score rating. I just thought that was a unique one that stood out to me. I know when you pull it up and you get a cumulative of all the scores that were there, it brings the average up a bit, but that one specifically stood out to me is how we can try to work on that a little bit more. I did note, and I found value in the consistency across parents, students, alum, staff with valuing tradition and safety and community and all that. I thought that was wonderful. I also noted the free, that students had mentioned the free lunch, which is a very unique thing and very interesting to think of that that's going through their mind, that they value that and definitely something that we as a committee need to continue to make sure that we work really hard to ensure that we can do our best for them because the fact that they're actually thinking about that, I think is something that you really need to think about. And then the way we receive information with communication being something we're always talking about, I thought it was interesting that email versus a newsletter is preferred by everybody and just something to think of when we're going forward with how we're sending out smores and newsletters and everything and what the best way to do that is. So, those were all mine, but thank you.
Mr. Russo.
I just want to make sure that we, maybe there's a point of order. Maybe just think about opening, keeping the door open. I don't know if it was.
Sure. We just, yeah, it's unlocked.
Okay.
If somebody could just verify their, the drama isn't.
We had a robust student club out there. And we didn't want to thwart their enthusiasm.
Thank you very much, but yeah.
Yeah, no, Ms. Griffin, thank you very much for that. I mean, I agree, extremely valuable report, extremely valuable information. Maybe just a couple comments, maybe one question here. I think the support staff that you mentioned has increased drastically. And maybe just as a comment, you know, especially as we lose some of that grant funding, funding over the next 12 months with ESAR funds going away, et cetera. You know, how are we thinking about maintaining that? Some of that, you know, are we looking at a significant increase from a budgetary standpoint in trying to get ahead of some of that with town manager, finance committee, et cetera? Just, again, just sort of a thought in my head. As far as some of the focus areas that you mentioned, specific to the in-classroom observations, specific as to instructional support domain, you know, this, this data is, you know, again, sort of over a year old now. You know, in your professional opinion, I know you, between you and Ms. McDermott, you've been attending classrooms frequently and seeing some of your own observations. In your opinion, do you feel like some of that has been improving over the last 12 months in your professional opinion?
I can give you a specific and that's the KDA six ELA pilot program. We've seen in those classes. I would also say the KDA four math improvement instructional strategies. We have seen students exhibiting their perspective on what they read, what they learned, what they're writing about, as well as how they know. And just an example was the math class. We watched second graders add a series of four two-digit numbers and they were able to tell us in their own perspective, in different ways, how they did that very easily. So, we're seeing not only, you know, sure, we want student achievement too, but we want the student to have a more improved, you know, instructional experience. And when they're engaged in why they know what they know because of their perspective, you know, we see them learning better. So, we're already seeing it through improved resources and instructional strategies and coaching.
Okay. All right. Excellent. And then the only thing, my last point is just on sort of the attributes that you're working to develop from a student's perspective and then how to have that educator's perspective sort of matched up. And then there's an activity assessment. I guess the only maybe thought that was running through my head when you were explaining that was, how does an educator then differentiate with 20 different types of students in a classroom versus just having maybe some of your gen ed versus your special ed versus maybe some of your, you know, advanced learners of some sort? So, you know, now you bring in those different attributes. How does an educator maybe try to help now manage that? You know, especially if they're the only paraprofessional in that class.
So, this is a really, this will be a huge area of focus in our professional development. It is not easy. Mr. Parsons can tell you as a high school chemistry teacher, it is not easy to note, you know, like you said, differing learning abilities as well as, you have your content, you have your standards. So, our big lift is going to be engaging our staff, our teachers. And there are teachers that do it masterfully at every single grade level and then they can help and support other teachers. Our PD next year will be helping and especially our middle and high school level teachers. And I'm not going to say that they don't differentiate, but it does pose a more unique challenge when the content standards become more difficult. And we know that. So, they do need that support in professional development. So, I agree, but it does require regular dipsticking in the data to know. And, you know, classroom instruction that may require some centers, if you will, or time. You know, the teacher pulls the group that needs some more support where the students may be working more independently that have. So, there's lots of strategies around that, but that is going to be, and I would ask Ms. McDermott if she has any more on that, not that I'm putting you on the spot, but I think where we'll probably see one of our greater professional development needs district by.
For next year, okay.
I would just add that those attributes won't be something extra.
Yeah.
So, they'll be infused into everything that we're doing. So, it's not like we're going to be teaching math and then we're going to be teaching them how to be a creative problem solver. We'll be teaching creative problem solving through the math content. So, at least it's not an additional thing.
Understood. Okay. Okay. Excellent. Appreciate the responses. Thank you guys for the work.
Mr. Parsons.
All right. A few comments. First one being, it is so satisfying to see this in front of us, like a tangible product. I feel like I was daydreaming about this two years ago, so it's great to have this direction finally. I'm just seeing one trend and I want to preface what I'm pointing out just by understanding that it's multifactorial. I'm not sure what the cause of the trend would be, just an observation. But I'm just seeing that around instructional support and development, K through five, it's an average of a 4.2, six through eight, 3.8, nine through 12, we're 3.3. So, I'm just seeing a decrease in that category throughout the grade bands. I'm not going to pretend like I know the reason or nor am I going to guess what it is. But it is a curious trend. And I do understand that as a town and a committee, we have invested more heavy in the earlier grades as we should. We built a new elementary school, we're revamping curriculum. And if anyone ever reads any kind of education research, investing younger always yields better outcomes for students later. Like, I understand all that. That's interesting. I'm just wondering, are we in a place or will we be in the near future where we can start shifting a little more focus or kind of reallocating where our priority is once those elementary systems and curriculum are in place back towards the middle and high school bands?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you, Mr. Parsons. And I think, again, similar to what I said to Mr. Russo, there's the challenge, how we really infuse differentiated approaches in the higher content level areas. I mean, it really is, it is a challenge. I would also say, you know, if you even looked at some of the student feedback, students were wonderful in their feedback, but you know, they, some of them said things like improved teaching methods. I want to know what they mean by that. Because students are really, you know, well-informed, educated consumers and they know what feels right and they want their voice heard and we need to keep them in this conversation. And we know that experiential learning in the higher level, grade levels, also engages our students to better understand. So, we need to take some of those things we know that work very well at our younger grade level and hopefully those educators who are masterful at that can help support. And it is all, and I was here at the high school as a high school principal, I will tell you, it is very challenging in some of those content areas to know how to do that. You know, it really, it just is. And we need to provide those supports to the staff. We have very low class sizes here. I mean, we know we've been, we've been suffering through a lowered enrollment here. So, the time is right to bring in those supports and try to manage that at our high school and middle school. But I think what you'll see and through our feedback said a million ways, is students want some choice and voice and that could be part of it.
I think the learning walks that we've done this year have helped when all of the administrators have met at different schools and done some classroom walkthroughs and then met and debriefed. And it did come out, you know, that was noticeable to the secondary administrators that, wow, these little first graders can work independently while the teacher has a group. I'm guessing this could happen at our level as well, but it's not something you see as often. So, I think having the administrators see the effects, the positive effects of that will likely start to trickle into the classroom a little bit more.
One more thing too, and just out of curiosity, did you see any kind of difference in cell phone usage amongst students from K through 12?
Well, we're not seeing it probably at the extent that our teachers are, but we're definitely seeing some social media disciplinary needs at the younger grade levels that we didn't see before. So, you know, just, it requires us to be very mindful of how we use technology with our young ones because they get caught up really fast. Yeah, it's exciting. The world of AI is very exciting, but also very scary because it does change the landscape of class. Artificial intelligence and.
I'm just thinking, even, I know students aren't supposed to be using them during school time. I imagine in the upper grades, the cell phone usage in class probably more of a problem and distraction than, you know, in a second grade class, I would hope. And this is like an impossible question to answer, just throwing out there. Is there anything we can do to refocus students' attention away from the phones? More to what's in front of them in their classrooms?
I think that goes right back to that trend you're seeing too, an instructional, the instructional piece in the class. Engage students, engage in the learning. And yeah, I'm gonna, I'd be absolutely fibbing to you if we didn't, and I would say this is, many adults are guilty of this too. It's that nomophobia, if I'm not looking like something's happening that I need to know about. But when we can engage them, you know, or even just say, put it down and now you'll have five minutes later. There's different strategies teachers are using. They're definitely a distraction, I would agree with you. But we are trying to teach our kiddos to use those devices for good, not evil, and in the right way. And that's going to probably be teaching we have to do until the technology changes again.
I'm sure we're not unique there.
No.
By any means.
We are not.
All right. That's all. Thank you guys so much.
Sure. Mrs. Anderson.
Yeah, just a couple questions. The first one, and I noticed that too, the instructional support domain, that was probably the area of focus in all of the different grade levels. So, is there opportunities to look in other districts who scored higher to see how they're doing this and if we can take lessons learned from them too?
Sure. Or even within our own four walls. We had a fairly robust process of high school teachers visiting each other's classes in interdepartmental and sometimes even crossing department lines to help tweak lessons. We called it tuning lessons. And that was a really successful strategy we used pre-COVID that I know our high school staff really wants to engage in again. It's also a strategy, for example, the second grade classes, we saw fully engage in amazing math understanding that we then worked with the principal. We want our third grade teachers to go view those classes. Those, that type of instructional learning from each other is very valuable right within our own walls. I know our ELA team was going to talk to you a little bit. They went out and looked at some of those improved instructional support strategies in other districts around ELA, early, the science of reading, early literacy. Very valuable.
Good. The other one, so you had mentioned a report about rating school needs as far as facilities. Do we have a copy of that or can we get a copy of that? Just thinking ahead of budgetary needs for the next couple of years.
I would defer to Mr. Libby on that, the grading, if you will, or rating of our systems at different schools.
I can get you a copy of that.
Okay. Thank you. And I've only looked through the overview. I've not dived into the details, but I can appreciate the work that went into this from the district and the community. And I think I came in at the perfect time to reap all the benefits from all the work everybody did. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I just had a few things. First of all, in terms of the school committee governance, where it mentions some possible inclusion of student feedback, I think that's something I would love to explore. If the district could support the committee in that, I think from a policy perspective, it would be really nice to have some student feedback. So, maybe we can all think about and talk about what that might or could look like. The other thing was in leadership and government in terms of the next cycle negotiations. It does mention, you know, it would be helpful to have sort of a standardized approach on that. So, I think that would be helpful if maybe we could engage in conversations with our bargaining groups before we get to our next cycle. So, I think that's good feedback for us as a committee. The data, I know it can be time-consuming, but like Mr. Parsons, I agree. I love. I love seeing the data, it's really helpful to us. So I know it's a lot of work, especially on the part of the educators that are collecting it, so I want to thank them for their time doing it. In terms of curriculum and instruction, I saw a similar pattern that Mr. Parsons is mentioning, but I kind of tied it in a little bit to a couple other things. So under the improving student learning experience, the students and alumni using the phrase "teaching for understanding" really spoke to me.
Yeah.
I think that's something at all grade levels, even as adult learners, that just speaks to me. So I think taking that and kind of applying that would be, I think, very helpful. Then also tying that into curriculum instruction where it talks about, you know, I could appreciate the recognition of hands-on instruction and project-based learning. From using that kind of an approach, I think would be helpful at all levels because when we talk about students not feeling like they're, under the other instructional support domain, and with the improvement student learning, and then under curriculum instruction, it just felt like those three things kind of tied together in a strong way. So I think you probably understand what I'm trying to say, but I think it was three totally different areas where I think that theme was pretty strong.
Think about the Genius Hour, you know, when you see those students engage and the learning was so rich and the understanding because, you know, they had choice, it was project-based learning, it was hands-on, and it was phenomenal.
Right. So, I mean, I think personally, it's something I would really support the district, you know, kind of having a little bit more direction in that way. Whether it ties into a lot of this data, I don't know, but I liked seeing it mentioned because it's something else that kind of speaks to me. And then the other last piece was under family engagement and prioritizing that in the strategic plan moving forward. I think when I think about some of those things, what would make a difference, I mean, I think, something I think would make a huge difference is maybe looking at when do parents have an opportunity to get information about their student? And sometimes it's through an email, but maybe looking at our parent-teacher conference, you know, or at the district's parent-teacher conference routines. I don't know that, you know, there's always an opportunity for every parent to attend is, I think, an issue. And then also, does it triangulate the relationship sometimes between the student, the teacher, and the parent?
Okay.
So maybe that speaks to you, maybe it's something that carries, but I think when they talk about family engagement in terms of communication, we see that they, on a general level, want email, but when it pertains to just their student and progress, is there some way to engage that student in the process with the teacher and the parent or caregiver? So those are the things that stuck out to me. And I just want to say thank you so much because I, in living through this experience, it was a lot, it was a lot. And I think, I thank the teachers that allowed them into their classrooms and all the district leadership that really had to weigh in heavy. So, and it was a lengthy presentation for us to comment, but.
Comprehensive review.
This is what we're here for, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
We're good.
Okay, moving on. I'd like to, oh, did you want to introduce?
Yes, and now obvious, a nice segue would be to talk about those instructional support improvements. Do you want to? With Rania here, might we, while Felicia queues up?
That's perfect, yeah.
That would be great. Hi, Rania.
Thank you.
So yeah, if that's okay, if it pleases the board, could we, is there a motion to resume, to go back to, I don't even remember what number.
Yes, I'll make that motion to resume our student feedback. Thank you.
A second?
Okay, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, so Rania, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry about the wait, but.
It's okay.
I didn't know if I could come in yet.
Thank you.
So to begin, I'm going to start off with some club updates. So for the past two months, the student council has been very busy, from attending leadership conferences to planning school-wide events, the effort just doesn't stop from them. Recently, we've been planning several events for Teacher Appreciation Week to reward our teachers for everything they've done for us. Additionally, in the future, the student council will be chairing the Special Education Prom, which will be hosted at TMHS, but will bring together special ed students from several schools. Additionally, on Friday, April 14th, the student council will also be volunteering at the College Fair for the Class of 2024, which will be located in the gymnasium from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. Yesterday, April 11th, many members attended the NEMAS Conference at North Reading High School, where they learned how to be better leaders and members of the student council. Moreover, last month, March 8th and through March 9th, nine members of the student council, including myself, attended the Hyannis MASC Conference, which is actually why I wasn't here last month. And it was really an unforgettable experience because we all made so many new memories, we made a lot of new relationships, and most importantly, we learned a lot about student council leadership and how to become the best members of student council we can be to really help our school. Along with this, at the same time, on March 9th, DECA went to the SCDC at the Marriott Copley-Boston Heinz Convention Center. And the TMHS Theater Company has been hard at work as well, and the Spring Musical Beauty and the Beast will be debuted on April 27th through April 29th. Some sports updates I have include that the season's spring sports include track, lacrosse, baseball, softball, tennis, and dance team. And all these sports have kicked off already, with many of them having had their first meets, games, scrimmages, and much more. So finally, just some miscellaneous things I have include that we've entered into a new term, which is the last and final quarter of the year, and AP exams are steadily approaching. The first one will be AP Gov., which will be on May 1st, and the last one will be the AP World History Exam on May 11th. And shortly after these AP exams, the 10th grade students will be taking the Math MCAS on Tuesday, May 16th and 17th, and the freshmen will be taking the Biology MCAS on June 6th and 7th. The 10th graders have already taken the English MCAS on March 22nd and March 23rd. The NHS Induction Ceremony was on Wednesday, March 28th, and the Junior Prom took place last Thursday, April 6th, at the End of Our Country Club. And this week, seniors have left to complete their senior projects, which will be eventually displayed on June 2nd. So that's all I have for tonight, and we're all excited for April vacation.
Thank you, Rania. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great.
Mrs. Shivanovich, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Committee Members. Our presentation won't be as long as the superintendent's, but it will be just as thorough, I promise. With me tonight, I have Mrs. Kelly Cracchiolo, she's one of our district literacy coaches. She's going to co-present with me tonight. So it's really my pleasure to give you some exciting updates about our ELA Curriculum Resource Pilot that has been underway all school year. You've received a packet of information, quite lengthy, to go over prior to this meeting. My hope tonight is that my presentation is just kind of an overview to you and our community about this pilot program we've been doing, and ultimately, our literacy curriculum recommendation tonight. So before we get started, I'd like to give you a quick review about the big why, why we engaged in this literacy curriculum pilot to begin with. So if you look at this, this is a great visual, this is Scarborough's reading rope, I don't know if you've seen it before, but basically what it shows is the complexity of learning how to read. So at the top rope, you have language comprehension, at the bottom, you have word reading. And currently, we have two really strong resources to teach word reading in grades K to 3. We have Hegarty, which addresses phonemic awareness, and we have Foundations, which I've presented on before, that's our phonics program. So what we were really looking for was a language comprehension curriculum to replace Journeys, which we've used for the past six, seven years, and we've had time to see where the gaps were in student learning with that curriculum resource. So that's the why behind the pilot. And as you already know, we went with EL Education and Witten Wisdom in selected classrooms through grades K to 6. And we chose these two highly rated programs in order to engage our learners in standards-based, content-driven lessons, which, along with deep studies of high-interest topics, will build literacy skills while students acquire knowledge. We also learned in our research that these two programs paired really well with Foundations, and they were also backed by the science of research, the research, science of reading, which was really important to us when we started this process. Okay, so now I'm going to go through just a quick recap of what we've done over the past year for our pilot timeline. So we started with district leadership, along with our literacy coaches. We researched highly rated language comprehension programs through both DESI, Curate, and Ed Reports, and those are the gold standards for high-quality curricular resource ratings. We also consulted with neighboring districts and conducted some field trips and site visits to neighboring communities so we could see these two pilot programs in action, which was actually a lot of fun. We also held teacher interest meetings and asked our educators to help us determine what those two final pilot programs were going to be. And then ultimately, we created two pilot groups, one for EL, one for Witten Wisdom, which consisted of 36 general education teachers and special educators. And a real shout out to that group, I mean, they committed a tremendous amount of time and effort into learning a brand-new curriculum this year and constantly giving us their insights and their feedback and letting us commit and observe that. It's a new curriculum for them to learn, so they did an amazing job with that. So we also scheduled monthly and quarterly meetings with both pilot groups to provide ongoing support and professional development. Our district literacy coaches, who were each assigned a pilot program, helped to provide lesson planning support, lesson modeling, and really regular job-embedded professional development. TPS Leadership conducted in-district classroom observations of both pilot programs, and we also facilitated teacher visits to observe each pilot program in action. So what that looked like is our folks who piloted EL got to go and observe a colleague teach Witten Wisdom and vice versa. So they got to see the other pilot as well. We also made, we had several meetings with sales representatives, ongoing meetings with sales representatives to explore the best pricing and professional development options for Tewksbury. And we also made these curriculum materials available to the community for viewing at the central administration office. And speaking of student perspectives, we surveyed over 600 students from grade kindergarten all the way to sixth regarding their experience with EL and Witten Wisdom, and we have those results to share with you in a little bit. And finally, we surveyed pilot teachers in grades K to 6 to gauge how strongly they would recommend each program that they participated in. So it was a really comprehensive pilot timeline. So the final recommendation regarding which ELA curriculum resource to purchase and implement takes into consideration these three factors: scope, range, and quality of the program resources, staff evaluation, and observable student learning, and of course, overall program cost. So here are the pilot teacher survey results. You can see that this graphic right here shows that 92% of EL pilot teachers gave a "highly recommend" or "recommend" as a rating on the survey, and on the other side, 86% of Witten Wisdom pilot teachers highly recommended or recommended the program. So you can see that the numbers are fairly close, but it's also interesting to note that 7% of EL pilot teachers recommended the program with some reservation, while 13% of the Witten Wisdom pilot teachers recommended with some reservation. And here is our student results. So our literacy coaches developed student-friendly versions of a pilot survey, that, like I said, that was completed by over 600 students. Students gave ratings of "great," "okay," or "not so great" to four questions that asked them about the text they read over the year, the writing instruction, their activities they participated in, and the learning that occurred during their literacy instruction. And as you can see from both of these surveys, EL Education overall, in terms of satisfaction for teachers and students, came out higher. All right. So I won't keep you in suspense any longer. We are so excited to share our recommendation for EL Education as our new English Language Arts Curriculum Resource for grades K to 6. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Cracchiolo. She was actually the literacy coach, where are you, Kelly? Come on up. She was actually the literacy coach that worked directly with the EL pilot teachers over the course of the year. So she's going to talk about some of the big-picture program highlights out of many that influenced our decision to go with EL Education.
Good evening, everyone. So one of the, there were many components about EL that I know I loved, the teachers that I got to work with loved, and, you know, working with Felicia and having our weekly conversations. There were so many great things. But one of them that really stood out to all of us is how SEL is embedded into EL Education. And I heard a lot of talk tonight about the importance of focusing on that, but not separate, but across everything that we do. And we certainly see that in the EL Education curriculum. So the slides that you see up here really show how in EL, starting in kindergarten and then moving right on through to our upper elementary grades, there is a focus in nearly every lesson on what they call habits of character. So it's things like respect, integrity, ethics, collaboration, cooperation. And also hearing this evening, talk about students' perspective being represented. EL really does a beautiful job with this because as the teacher, you don't just say, well, we're going to show respect in this classroom, and then you define respect and say, we're done. It's, we are going to show respect, this is what respect means, like a definition, but then the students work together to generate, what does that look like and what does it sound like? And you create these anchor charts, such as you see up here, that become a reference point for the entire school year. So a question might be, well, how does this tie to literacy learning? And what happens is students read about characters and real-life people, and they talk about how they're displaying these habits of character. And then when it's time to do the work, like the writing work or the conversational work that they do, it's, how are you now going to show the same habit of character? And then once the work is finished, it's, now let's reflect. Did you show that habit of character? And if not, it's okay, we're all learning, but what are you going to do the next time? So it's just woven into everything that they do in this curriculum. And I just think about if kids start in kindergarten with this and they grow up with this, and teachers are reporting that they're just seeing it spill over into other areas of the curriculum as well, and that's what we want. So another component that we felt really strongly about in EL Education is the high-interest text collections. And again, thinking about some of what I heard this evening about student perspective, as Felicia mentioned, really high responses from students in the EL pilot as to, we enjoyed the activities, we enjoyed the topics, we enjoyed the writing. And some of that is credited to the text sets that come with this curriculum. So you get not just the required texts that teachers are reading aloud to help build that content, but these beautiful collections of books come with it as well. So you're building your classroom library as a result, you're giving students opportunities. I heard about differentiation this evening. Some of our students who are high flyers, right? You give them access to these beautiful books and they do additional research. So they're building on what they're already learning in the module work. So when a teacher is pulling a small group for, you know, small group support, they can be doing some additional research using the text provided. So we think that that is a real strength of the EL Education curriculum, for sure. Another strength that we saw is the hands-on learning, and I also heard that referenced this evening. I think as Felicia and I were sitting there, we were like, yes, yes. So, and I get the fun part, get to share photos of kiddos actually engaging in the work. So these are some of our kindergartners and second graders engaging in that hands-on work that you were speaking about this evening. The very first module in kindergarten is called Toys and Play. It's really hard to beat that, right? So the kids are listening to you read books about that, they're learning about toys from long ago, like when I was a kid, right? And toys today and making comparisons. And they're learning about how to describe attributes of toys, shape, color, texture, size. And then they get to go play. And as the teacher, you go around and you encourage them, what attributes are you noticing? Tell your partner. And they get to, they get to play, and then they get to design their own toys, and they get to write about them. So you don't get much more hands-on than that, and you can see by their faces, they loved it. Our second graders have been learning about paleontology and fossilization. Our second graders have been learning about paleontology and fossilization, and they're engaging in these labs that also accompany EL education. We think that's a really unique feature. You have your module work, which happens during the ELA block, but then you have this lab time that has hands-on materials in these kits that are provided by EL. So second graders have been building dinosaur models, they've been making fossils, and they've actually been using the tools that paleontologists use on a miniature scale to dig fossils out of clay and sand, and then they have to construct them and put them back together. And they are also loving it. So it kind of makes you want to go back to second grade, right? And then a final component that we felt was a really strong component in EL education is the writing. And students really responded well to writing, and I think if you look at the data that Felicia shared earlier, they really enjoyed the writing as well. And what we're seeing in our K to 2 students and in our 3 to 6 students is we're seeing a consistency in the language of writing. And so we know, as students grow up in this kind of a program, that they will take what they're learning from one grade level to the next, to the next, and it will continuously build. But it's not like you're reinventing the wheel every school year. So kindergartners through second graders are learning about things like focus statements, writing with details, writing conclusions, which then supports essay writing in grades 3 through 6. And I have a daughter in 6th grade who just finished the MCAS, and there were a lot of essays to write in that MCAS. So it's so supportive of the rigor moving forward. And look at the kindergarten writing, it's beautiful. And the second-grade writing, the vocabulary, minerals seep into the bones. This is second graders. Over time, the water washes it away. So we're seeing the vocabulary showing up in the writing as well. And then for our 3rd through 6th graders, the essay writing has been phenomenal. They learn about this structure called the painted essay in 3rd grade, and they continue to learn about that in 4th grade and 5th grade and 6th grade. And they learn that an essay is constructed in a certain way, and you can paint each section to be sure that it's there by highlighting. And then you'll see a 5th grader in one of our, in our only 5th-grade classroom, actually, that piloted EL, when he wrote his essay, he wrote it in each of the different colors to be sure that he was including a thesis statement, two key body paragraphs in a conclusion. So we're just seeing this strength in writing, starting in kindergarten, moving on through the upper elementary grades, and I think we're really excited to see kids grow up in this kind of a writing system.
Thank you, Kelly. But wait, there's more. There's more exciting news. So we're also moving forward with ordering or purchasing Godes for grades K to 2. So Godes are information-rich, decodable books that provide emerging readers with an opportunity to build their knowledge, like you heard, right? Talking about fossilization and dinosaurs and things like that, while they practice their foundational reading skills. So if you think about those two ropes we looked at earlier, those two strands, decodable books are the bridge between the two. So they connect word reading and language comprehension, and it gives kids the opportunity to practice. So we're also moving forward with recommending Godes. And that wraps up our presentation tonight. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Mr. Parsons, I'll start with you.
I'm all set.
Mr. Russo.
Yeah, no, I spent some time in your office. Felicia and Lori, thank you for your time earlier this week, so I got all my questions answered. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Mrs. B. Joni Smith?
Thank you. I actually didn't do that, but I do have just something that I noted, made note of when I was going through the more comprehensive review, and it was just, there was maybe a consistent theme among some of the responses from, and maybe it was staff, and I didn't spend a ton of time diving into who made it, but that there was, I guess, a focus on, not as much of a focus, I guess, on the diverse learner. So a lot of focus on those who are meeting grade-level needs, but less of a focus on those that are maybe needing more challenging material or those needing to maybe, for the material to come down to what level they're at. So I think maybe that was through maybe the teacher feedback. So it was just something I wanted to bring up that I saw on there and I thought was important to kind of draw attention to, but all of the work that went into it seems like it was incredible. I did read a lot of the positive reviews, and I think that, I just think that there was so much effort put into making sure that we picked the right one, that I appreciate that. But yeah, that was one of the ones. And then the other content that I noticed was making sure that there were sufficient materials and resources for teachers to ensure that they're able to deliver the material in the best way possible. Just a common theme that I saw through some of that, but I'm sure that that would come through on professional development and so forth and so on.
Yep, we're hoping to partner with a company called Imagine Learning, and Kelly can speak to it as well. Their tech platform, in terms of the materials, like you saw the slides up there, they're all pre-made for teachers with teacher notes right there. And I don't know, Kelly, if you want to talk about some of the materials that come with it, but we can definitely take a look at that, and I think, you know, our implementation year will be a learning year for us as well. But to talk about your other comment as well, it was funny, when we did our student, our teacher presentations about the strengths and challenges of each program, I think the theme that we picked up in that meeting was, from both actual, both pilot programs, was they were so incredibly happy with how their special education students and EL students took to these two programs. In fact, there were many times that students on IEPs were driving the conversation because it's so rich and there's such a deep dive into each story that they really have time in exposure to the vocabulary and the content. So we hope to hear more of that, and I do know that each lesson comes with extensions. So it does say, you know, "For your students in need, try this. For your EL students, use this." But we can always expand on that.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And just to clarify, when you say you were seeing that in the teacher feedback, you were looking at either ed reports or curate, not necessarily Tewksbury?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Because it is definitely one of the strengths of the program that we found, is one of the most amazing things that came out of the presentation was that teachers are now saying, "We don't want our students who are on IEPs or our students who are receiving EL support to leave the room during this content instruction because it is a time where they're shining. It is a time where all students can access higher-level story structure, higher-level content, higher-level vocabulary. They're engaging in really deep, rich conversations, and they're really shining." Teachers are seeing that, gee, for the different modes of formative assessment, not necessarily maybe a writing piece, but in conversation, that while these students, they're really learning what I'm teaching them, they're just not necessarily able to demonstrate it in this particular mode right now, but they're confident that they'll get there. So that's been a great thing. The other thing I would add is the decodable piece of it, the Godes, is actually not a part of EL. So some of what you were seeing, the Godes, is actually a separate piece that matches with foundations, and that is so that students are reading content-rich decodables. Decodables means there's controlled text that has certain patterns of language, like it might have a lot of "an" family words, "an," short vowel words, right? Long vowel words. In years past, before this research was shared, decodables were sort of deemed boring and not exciting for students. So what companies did is developed really content-rich, better decodables, and that's what we'll have with the Godes. So having both ends of that, where we're teaching the word decoding, the word sounding out, the actual real word reading, and developing comprehension skills at a higher level, building kids' background, because we all know that the more you know about a topic, the more you can understand in your reading. So those things coming together allows for so much diverse instruction, so much differentiation. And already, from just August, September to April, what we're seeing in our students, I have to say, I'm exploding. Like, I'm so excited about this from seeing those presentations and seeing the excitement from the teachers. So I really feel like the sky's the limit for our students, and Tewksbury is so lucky to have this opportunity.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate you clarifying and reiterating that it was from the, it was ed reports. I do have it cited down here, and that our Tewksbury teachers found it to be where it needed to be. But yeah, thank you.
Very inclusive.
Yes.
Okay. And Mrs. Anderson?
Just two comments. I was happy to hear that you had whoever, whatever teachers were piloting the one program, had them observe the other program, because I think it's hard to make a recommendation if you don't know what the other.
Well, that's what we were thinking about all of those pieces, right? Because you tend to like the one that you pilot. So, and we told teachers that they were all really in a good position because these two programs really changed instructional practice. They made a big shift in their teaching. So either way we went, everybody who piloted is in a good place, and I think they saw that. When they went and saw the opposite program, they said, "Oh, yeah, we're doing that. That looks very similar to what we're doing with our program." So I think that was helpful.
And the hands-on, so I think the, when you were talking about the learning or reading about fossils and that they're actually doing activities in a science lesson is important.
Yeah, many times when you walked into an EL lesson, it looks like a science lesson or a social studies lesson. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And then I'm last, I just wanted to say thank you so much for all of your work and the teachers that piloted this. I mean, 36, that's a good number of our teachers that took this on, and especially thank you to the teachers who took on the curriculum that wasn't adopted, because that was a heavy lift, I imagine. And my only question is, what happens to the leveled reading rooms?
The what?
The leveled reading rooms that, you know, used to have all the books?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you keep those, or is that?
Yeah. I mean, so we will repurpose them. There's, the problem, the leveled readers are excellent texts. They have a lot of rich, you know, content. I definitely see a purpose for them. We don't want teachers to use those leveled readers in the capacity that they were used before, in the sense that we don't want students coming together to read that book because they're a Level H. We want them to come together to read that book for a different instructional purpose that matches the targeted focus that they need in that moment. So I don't think that those will no longer be useful. I just think we have to think collectively in how we'll repurpose them and support teachers to use them as needed. I'm sure if we start looking through content, and we've talked a little bit about this, where they can match and where we can use them, yeah, to build up some text sets. So that's a great question.
That's interesting.
And I might add, some of those text sets were chosen because they align with our curriculum frameworks in different content areas as well, social studies and/or science. So they're useful.
Okay. And having three children that went through journeys, I'm so envious, this is so great to have like such rich content, so.
We're really excited.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
And if it pleases the board, I'm not sure if it makes sense for us to move item 19B out of new business, the ELA curriculum purchase recommendation. Is this something that you feel would be appropriate to vote on that?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to allocate or to move 19B up.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, is there any more information that we need before we vote on the?
I think you have it. I'm recommending the school committee support the purchase and implementation of EL education by Imagine Learning. This would be a six-year subscription for grades K to 6 in the amount of $629,000 and, $629,516,000 using capital outlay and grant funding. You have all of the supporting documents in your packet, and the piloted materials have been on display in the curriculum office for the past couple of weeks for public viewing. And as a reminder, this does require a vote.
Okay. So and given that it involves money and spending, this will be a roll-call vote, so Mrs.?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to honor the recommendation of both the literacy coach and the assistant superintendent and adopt the EL education by Imagine Learning on the six-year subscription.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. B. Joni Smith and a second by Mrs. Anderson. And Mr. Russo, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mrs. B. Joni Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well for unanimous vote of five to zero. So thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And that moves us to citizens forum. Does it have anybody? We have one person signed up to speak. Yes, please, and I love your shirt. Those at home, she's wearing it.
Penguin pride, he's wearing a Penguin pride shirt.
Yeah.
Can't tell from here. Danielle Brezner, Henshaw, Tewksbury resident. First of all, I just want to thank the school committee for allowing me the opportunity to speak again. I spoke last month. And just following up on some things that I spoke about last month, so I do appreciate the opportunity to speak at these meetings. Last month, I spoke at the school committee meeting and voiced my concerns about the lack of policies within our district that would help to ensure the physical and mental well-being of all of our students. And while I was nervous to speak out last month, my remarks clearly resonated with many other community members, because the next morning I woke up to an influx of messages, some from people that I knew and others from complete strangers. But every single message that I received was in support of my remarks, thanking me for stepping up and saying the things that so many people want to say but don't. And after reading through the TPS School Committee Policy Manual that Chairperson Garabedian sent to me last week, I could not find a policy related specifically to the concerns that I expressed last month. I will say, though, that the policy is very lengthy, hundreds of pages, so there is the possibility that I did miss something. But after reading through it, I could not find something specifically related to my concerns. So I come to you again and ask for you to do more for our students. I have heard repeatedly from parents in our district that when they reach out to their child's school about concerns, they are told from the school that they cannot share any information with them due to student privacy. But they are also told that a school counselor can be made available to speak with their child if they would like. Now, do I think it's great that the school will make counselors available to students that request it? Of course, absolutely. But do I think we should have to wait for parents to repeatedly make contact with the school and have that option offered only in response to parent concern? No. We need to be more proactive with our policies rather than reactive. Parents should be able to ask questions when their child witnesses concerning behaviors. And I'm going to quote someone specifically that emailed me in response to my concerns and said that their child is witnessing regular classroom evacuations and staff members being assaulted by students. Parents should be able to get more information from the schools about what is being done to not only help students cope with the emotional and mental aftermath of these events, but also regarding what is being done to prevent these things from even happening in the first place. How can I be expected to help my child cope and process these events when I don't even know that they're happening? How can I be expected to help my child learn empathy and compassion and help them understand the struggles of their classmate when the only story that I hear is an exaggerated or hyperbolic interpretation from a young child? The fact is, when there are not policies in place to support the needs of all of our students, everyone suffers. It's not fair to our teachers, our students, or the parents to leave them to navigate these challenges and struggles on their own with no meaningful information from the schools. And if the school administration won't step up to the plate and enact their own policies that effectively address these issues, then I ask the school committee to do that, to step up and to put the policies in place to require these things ahead of time, to communicate more with the parents. A lot of parents are left in the dark. Some parents don't even know that these things are happening until they hear other parents talking about these things on the baseball field or the soccer field, while other parents, their kids come home and they tell them about these things. But it's hard to believe it when it's a little kid and you don't know what's an exaggeration or what's an exact interpretation of what happened. So if we put these policies in place to allow that open communication, I hope that more parents will have faith that our schools are doing what needs to be done, will have more confidence in our schools, and that everyone in our schools, students and staff alike, will be able to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. And next is our approval of minutes with our, the elected clerk, Mrs. Anderson.
I motion the committee for the approval of the regular meeting minutes dated March 8th, 2023.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mrs. Anderson and a second by Mrs. B. Joni Smith. And all in favor, please say aye.
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 And that would be with one- And that would be with one absentia, uh, Mrs. Anderson not being present for the meeting. Thank you. Um, and next, submission and payment of bills.
I move the school department payroll for the period ending 3/16/2023 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,640,423.43.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Mrs. Uh, Anderson and a second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith to approve and certify the payroll period ending March 16th, 2023 in the total amount of $1,640,423.43. For a roll call vote, Mrs. Anderson, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well for a five to zero vote. Then we have, uh, March 30th.
Yep. I move the school department payroll for the period ending March 30th, 2023 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,522,140.56.
Second.
Okay. So it's a motion by Mrs. Uh, Anderson and a second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith to approve the, and certify the payroll period ending March 30th, 2023 in the total amount of $1,522,140.56. And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well for a five to zero vote. Okay. And then I'll turn this over to Mrs. Terry O'Regan, Superintendent reporting.
Madam Chair, I have a few updates. I'll be brief though. Um, first of which is our Seal of Bilitracy Stamp Exams have been taking place this week at Tewksbury Memorial High School. We wish our students well and much achievement to qualify for the Massachusetts Seal of Bilitracy. As Rania noted a little bit, our senior project kicked off this week here at Tewksbury Memorial High School. This is where our senior students have the opportunity for an in-depth, student-driven, career exploration process. Our college fair is in fact this Friday on our early release day, April 14th. Parents are encouraged to check that school calendar, the back of the legend for early release times at each of our schools. And yes, next week is April vacation. Uh, we certainly do wish all of our families the time to rest and reset as we come back to a very busy spring at our schools. Our Tewksbury Public School School Committee, School Committee Policy Manual is back online. Um, you are certainly aware, but maybe our public is not. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees website was breached through a ransomware attack. The good news is that the data in online policy manuals have been recovered and as again, they're up online. If anyone needs assistance in accessing that policy manual, feel free to reach out to our, um, main number, our central office or the superintendent's department. March was Women's History Month. I provided you with several examples of student work at the multiple grade levels. Um, you can certainly see students researching, reading, writing, and learning about women who have contributed to our nation and world's history. Uh, thank you to our many teachers who helped integrate these lessons into their core content. The smiles on our students' faces in those pictures are just priceless. So save the dates, please folks. Um, as Rania did mention, we have our spring musical performance slated for April 27th, 28th, and 29th, once we come back from vacation. Our 39th Annual District Art Show and Band Chorus Performance will be on Friday, May 5th. And then, uh, options for families and community to see all of our student artwork again on Saturday, May 6th. May certainly is a very, very busy month. It's, kicks off with several AP tests and MCAS exams, and, uh, we hope our students take advantage of the April break to study for those exams. We wish them much success on that as well. And when we come back again on May 10th, we'll be right in the middle of Teacher Appreciation Week. That concludes my updates for tonight.
Thank you. And Mrs. Uh, any, any questions, comments?
Nope.
Okay. Seeing none, we can move on to Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, we had a, a wonderful professional development day on March 15th. Uh, we took a more differentiated approach this time. I want to thank our teachers for their flexibility as this did require, uh, our teachers to travel to different buildings. Um, and that's never easy on a half day, so, uh, they really were very flexible and positive about, about the whole experience. So I appreciate that. Um, we had Kale Burke, he was back in person and worked with teachers in grades seven through 12 on the Vision of a Learner. We had two consultants come from MGH to talk about the science of reading, and this was to, um, support building the background for our teachers and why we're bringing in this new program and the shift in reading instruction overall. We had Kate Radville from MGH. She gave a comprehensive overview to our teachers in grades K to four and pre-K to four, sorry. And also we had Tim DeLuca come from MGH and did the same for our teachers in fifth and sixth grade at the Ryan. As a follow-up to Tim's presentation, because we had less piloting teachers at the Ryan, Kelly Cracchiolo, who you just met, one of our literacy coaches, shared a typical EL lesson. Um, at that time, we obviously didn't know it was going to be a EL as the selection, but since she was supporting the EL pilot, that's the one she showed. And she, um, demonstrated that lesson for the teachers so that they could just see how the science of reading comes to life in the classroom and that all of the content teachers, not just the ELA teachers, would get an idea. Because some of the feedback that we've gotten at the Ryan is that, um, when the teach, when the students in both pilot groups are moving on to say, science class, the science teacher's noticing that this higher level vocabulary coming from them and, and saying, hey, what are you doing in ELA that's, I'm noticing the difference in the students. So I was very appreciative of that opportunity for our teachers to, to learn about the program. Additionally, our K4 math teachers received professional development from our math coaches around unit implementation. This was in response to some feedback from the teachers that they were looking for more ongoing support. Um, oftentimes when we bring in new curriculum resources, we do a lot of the PD in the front end, but we're learning that we really need to continue that ongoing PD throughout the implementation so that the teachers feel supported along the way. Um, and one of the things that you brought up about the differentiation, I'm thinking it will, we will have to be responsive to those needs as they arise, if we do experience that for sure. Our tech coaches also provided professional development around using the ClearTouch to enhance lesson development and implementation in our, um, and they did that for all of our Unified Arts teachers. And our counseling team continued with their SEL work with Alex Herschberg. It was a really busy day for, for a few hours, um, but we're grateful to provide a wide variety of professional development opportunities for our teachers. We wrapped up ELA MCAS at Center last week, and we are thrilled that it went so smoothly, being a really large school and our first time going through this with them. A huge thank you to everyone at Center Elementary School for their support, patience, and flexibility. As we all know, that MCAS affects, uh, the entire school and certainly in a school that large, um, it, it's going to affect everyone in some way. This week, ELA MCAS is in full swing at the Ryan and the Wynn Schools. Please continue to keep an eye on the MCAS calendar as we move through April, May, and June for math and science testing dates as well. So we're, we've really just begun. Uh, the Standards-Based Report Card Committee continues to work through the logistics of bringing standards-based reporting to grades K through four. Some of the things we're working through include, um, determining reporting periods, how the Otis platform can support the rollout of standards-based reporting. Um, we're looking at the rate, the reporting scale, what kind of a scale we'll use. Will we use a one, two, three, four? Will we use more of a letter system? And then the, the most important work of selecting the standards and habits of character to be reported on. Um, that's just a few of the logistics that we're working through. It's really a monumental task, but we're really excited about it. We have representation from all the schools, and I cannot tell you how grateful I am for the amount of teacher support on this committee. It's, it's actually been, um, a lot of fun for all of us. We're all really excited about creating a reporting system that's going to give parents and caregivers, um, a much more granular look at what their students are learning, um, in school and how they're progressing toward the standards. So at this point, you might get a B in, in reading, but you have no idea what that means. And I think for some of the things that you heard today, you don't know how are they doing in acquiring new vocabulary? How are they doing in academic talk? How are they doing in decoding unfamiliar words? How are they doing collaborating with their peers? So the comments will be, um, that the habits of character will be a lot more granular to give a lot more information to families as well as the learning standards. So we're very excited about that. We are also thrilled to have been awarded the Accelerated Learning Literacy Through High Quality Instructional Materials Grant. That's a bit of a mouthful, but it couldn't have come at a better time. It's dedicated to providing teachers with high-quality instructional materials to improve literacy experiences and outcomes for all students. One of the, um, commitments from the state, from DESI, that I'm so appreciative of, is their recognition that teachers need high-quality instructional materials to have available to, um, support what they're trying to accomplish in the classroom. And they've actually devoted quite a bit of money to help districts get those materials. Tewksbury was ahead of the curve on that, um, and I am so excited about that, where we were already running, um, a very comprehensive pilot, whereas some other districts are, are getting a hold of this money right now and saying, oh, boy, we need to pick because the money will, has to be spent by June 30th. So they have less of an opportunity to run such a thorough pilot. So I'm very grateful for the timing on this. Uh, we were really lucky enough to be in the midst of that pilot. Um, and this funding source will support our selection and help us get the materials in the hands of the teachers now, um, and begin planning the comprehensive professional development plan that they'll need to move forward to bring this to their students successfully. And again, I just want to thank the, the teachers. This is a, this is different than any other pilot that I've ever been a part of in 28 years because typically you're piloting a new resource and that's challenging enough. But this was piloting a new resource while adopting a complete shift in instructional practice. Everything that we thought we knew about reading, we're being asked to, to rethink. And that's really, really challenging, and they did all of that at once. Um, so while we were trying to give them the background that they needed in, all while this was happening, and they just, they, they all kind of jumped in, um, were very, um, honest and, and vulnerable with sharing, boy, I really didn't think that this was going to go very well. I didn't think that my students were going to be able to achieve what they're achieving, but I'm happy to say that they are. And they're rising to this occasion and they're, I'm learning that maybe I need to push them a little bit more, and maybe I can, um, have some higher expectations. And, uh, they're just rethinking, and I, I'm also very appreciative of the time that they put into the presentations to share with each other. And all of the administrative team was invited to those presentations to learn. Um, they've opened their classrooms to administrators. They're opening their classrooms to, um, my former colleagues in Westford who are running a quickie pilot because of, um, getting some of this money. So they're, um, gonna open up their classrooms yet again in the midst of all of this MCAS testing. So I, I couldn't be more proud of them. That concludes my update.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
I, sorry, I have one. And I know this may be an overlap between you and Dave with budget, but that grant is the two, is a $200,000 grant, correct?
Correct.
And the EL, uh, curriculum is coming out of capital outlay. Was that grant kind of presumed going into the budget that that was coming, or do we have no idea?
We didn't, we didn't know. Fingers were crossed, but we didn't know.
Okay.
You may have a vague recollection that we received this grant last year and then we couldn't spend it on time. And fortunately, because of the acceleration roadmap and, um, resources for high-quality instructional materials, it came back and we were primed. We're ready. So between capital outlay, this grant, and potentially dipping into our, um, ESAR grants, we'll be well-suited to fund this, this, um, these resources for six years. So that's really wonderful.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. It was a, it was nice because that allows us monies, uh, otherwise to spend on other resources.
Other projects.
And I would say it, it actually worked out because I, I'm so glad that we were able to really run a true pilot and not have to hurry up and spend the money last year where you were able to really give, give this, um, the time and attention that it needed. And I, I think have, the teachers having the chance to have some, some voice and choice in this and, and being able to get the feedback from the students was, was really, really helpful.
I just have a question. Um, the $600,000, was that upfront or is that paid over the six years? Is it $100,000 a year?
It's, it's upfront.
It's upfront.
But we, we, yeah, we, we can, um, um, we have cap, a capital textbook fund.
Mm-hmm.
That will utilize some from, uh, this and next year. We'll buy some now with the grant and textbook fund and then also into next year.
And then what about like the consumables, like the, the dinosaur fossil things? Do you have to rebuy? You, I'm assuming you have to rebuy all those and is that part of the six?
Yeah, there will be some, um, of the, for the K to two, those lab kit refills, there will be some refills. But that's about it for consumables.
Which we would be purchasing with, um, any, you know, science consumable that we would have used anyway. So we're not, that, that won't be a huge lift year to year.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
It's expensive though. Are you surprised?
Yeah. Yeah. I won't tell you what the original quote was.
Yeah, Ms. Janovich received quite a lesson in how to work with publishers and really, um, get the best, get the best price and, and bang for the buck for the.
Your final and best offer.
Yes. It's a lot of work and it, it really, it did, did pay off. This one, the EL program was a little bit more expensive, but clearly you can see price was only one of those facets and it was well worth it by the survey results.
So my only comment, um, is I look forward to your update on the standards-based report cards.
Thank you.
So, yeah. Thank you for your work on it. Okay. And Mr. Lippi?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I have a couple of quick updates for the committee. Uh, first is, um, brief update on transportation. Uh, we've been facing, uh, you know, unprecedented driver shortages here in Tewksbury. Something we've never had to deal with, uh, at this level in Tewksbury before. We've always had, uh, good supply of spare drivers and, um, when folks have been out, been able to plug somebody into the seat. Um, and that's not been the case this year. So, uh, and unfortunately, many of the returns have been, um, the drivers' return dates have been prolonged. Uh, some of the new drivers we thought were, um, gonna be coming onboard have taken longer to get licensed. So, uh, things were delayed. Uh, so that kind of forced our hand to do something from our side of the table where, with routing, uh, we combined some routes, um, at the high school and the Wynn level to get through those, um, schools because they share the same geography and the, pretty much the same times. So we've been able to do some, some things with, uh, to reduce buses there, to reduce routes there. Bringing in other drivers to cover Ryan routes, um, because not all of our buses serviced the Ryan School sort of tier of the day. And then, uh, we rerouted and consolidated several routes at the K to four level. Thought the only, you know, the other way to skin the cat here was to, um, reduce the number of drivers we need. So that's kind of where we're at. Um, things have been quieting down a little bit the last, uh, couple of weeks here. Um, so hopefully, um, and we do have a few drivers slated to come back. So we should, um, be over, I hope, the toughest of times for the big yellow school buses around town. Um, and I would like to just acknowledge and thank the drivers that we do have here. Um, they've been picking up a lot of slack, um, covering extra routes. Um, you know, at no, you know, extra in their pockets, they're just running extra routes to kind of get the job done, albeit a little bit later than, than we would like to see, but at least kids are getting to school and getting home. So thanks to the drivers who have picked up the slack during this time and kind of making us realize the importance of the work that they do just in making things run smoothly for our overall operation. We've been slowly pecking away at clearing out the North Street and the Treyhand schools. Our existing schools have been kind of doing yard sale shopping through those schools and claiming anything that is, you know, still in good shape and better than items that they had at their schools, particularly the Heathbrook and the Doing. And some other districts have been inquiring about materials there. Cafeteria tables, we've received some cafeteria tables from other districts in the past for the high school. So our cafeteria tables there were in good shape. And we're good in district with the shape of our cafeteria tables. So we're moving some of those items to get prepared to, for whatever's going to happen with those schools. But emptying the buildings in any way we can. Our HVAC projects at the Ryan and the Wynn, those two projects are ESR-funded. Just as, by way of reminder, we budgeted money in ESR 2 for the design and engineering and the bid spec to be built for improving HVAC at the Ryan and the Wynn. And then we put funding in the ESR 3 budget to complete the actual construction. We faced some procurement issues on the design and engineering on ESR 3 that had delayed us. We had hoped to be, you know, well on our way to maybe having one of those projects completed this summer, the actual construction work. But that's not going to happen due to the delays with the procurement. But we are all cleared now with the state. We've signed a contract with our engineering company, met with them today. The deadline that I was concerned with was the ESR 3 funding has to be spent by September of '24. He is very confident that we'll be fine hitting that deadline and completing both of those projects next summer. Getting the bid specs done this summer out on the street, bids in place, materials ready to roll in the spring of '24, and work done in the summer of '24. So that was just some encouraging news I had today with, in that meeting with the designer and engineer who works on a lot of these projects around the state. So that concludes my update.
Thank you so much. Questions, comments?
Yeah, just one.
To yourself?
Thanks, Mr. Libby, for the information. As it relates to Tewksbury Transit Unionizing and joining, I think it was the Teamsters Union, whatever, is there anything, you know, put costs aside for a second, you know, is there anything that we should be considering that's going to impact our district, whether it relates to conditions on buses, working for those drivers, et cetera? Anything that we should be thinking about?
Not at the moment. I mean, we did receive the bid from Tewksbury Transit for the next three years, which included in conversations with their management after the bid, which included an increase for their drivers' wages. I think it's in anticipation of, you know, those negotiations with those groups and what the market, what they're seeing other districts paying for their labor. So I think we're going to be in good shape there. They seem to be very well-prepared in the benefits and, you know, they're doing their due diligence with, you know, paid time off and things like that. So I don't see any red flags as of yet, since that vote.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Bia Joni Smith?
Thanks. I know I asked you last time about the ESR 3 and the deadline by 2024. So just putting that sticky note back up there for a Plan B. I know, when is the, you said you met today. Is there another meeting scheduled with the developer, the builder, to kind of touch base again next year to make sure that procurement and that can actually still happen? What's the next meeting?
Oh, so he's coming there onsite, folks are coming next week to, you know, put eyes on those two buildings to help them get a better feel for what the best approach is. Whether it's taking out, every classroom has unit ventilators in them now. They make replacement unit ventilators, which are more modern and do cooling, heating, and ventilating at the same time. Or taking those out and putting outside units on cement pads outside. They can blow ductwork in to like a four, eight classroom at a time. So there's two different approaches that they're considering. And that's sort of the next step that they'll let us know which direction they're going to go. I expressed my wish to get this out to bid as soon as possible because the supply chain issues that we're hearing, it's difficult to get HVAC materials onsite.
Yeah.
We're 40 weeks is what we're hearing. So that's, if we wait till the fall, that's cutting it kind of close to get them here for next summer.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be pushing them.
Okay.
And they seem to understand that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Parsons?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Mrs. Anderson?
I'm good, thank you.
I just, you reminded me of something. I did have a person that used to formerly run one of the PACs that was at the Treyhand many years ago when they did the bricks. They were dedication bricks.
Oh, yeah.
I think they're out around the flagpole. So is there any opportunity to maybe dig those up and make those available to people that purchase them?
Yes, we should.
That was a specific request.
Yep.
So I don't know the best way to go about that, but I'm certainly willing to help support it if I can because there's some people, I think, that are pretty interested. And then also the bid for transit. Does that also include gas as it did last time, where we saw the rising cost in gas that seemed to not affect us too much? But...
Yes, we did not put in a fuel escalation clause. So that's the price.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
And also, at our meeting with the design team, I also asked them to do an overview of Doing and Heathbrook. And I was talking with the town manager. He suggested we look into those schools as well. The Doing has a very integrated piping system underneath, in tunnels underneath hallways. And it's, they're just rotting out and failing. So they're going to also give us a sort of a 90,000-foot level view of what those schools need and where we could improve to get us through 10, 12, excuse me, 10, 12 years of use in those buildings.
Okay. Great. Look forward to the information. Thank you. Great. Nothing further, or we can move on to the consent agenda? Is there anything else that you wanted to share, Mrs. Terry Oregan?
No.
Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
No.
My only comment is, as you mentioned before, Superintendent Oregan, I really appreciated all the photos and the updates of things that have gone on in the schools through Women's History Month. I think I like that. So anytime you want to add that stuff, I appreciate it. Is there a motion to approve?
I made the motion to approve the consent agenda.
In a second.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. Bia Joni Smith to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. And with no opposed, that's a five to zero passes. And now moving on to our school committee member report. So following tonight's reorg, next month, we should have new committee assignments. And then Mrs. Johnson will also post those online as soon as we have them. That may be before next meeting. And elementary school building committee, I will ask either our superintendent or Mr. Libby to speak to that, if you could.
Mr. Libby, would you like to talk about just where we are at with change order in following through the process on some needed?
Sure.
Sorry to put you on the spot with Mr. Sullivan not here. I just figured you maybe could speak in his ear.
Sure. So we're going to change order committee meeting this afternoon. And we're trying to have, may be our final request for change orders so that we can give the school building authority the final number on what the school costs. They have quite an extensive audit process that they need to go through that takes six to eight months to complete before they can release the final funding to the town. So it does impact the town's sort of free cash position and ability to pay the final invoices on the project. So it's sort of, the longer we drag things out, we know there's, you know, things we'd like to see done as part of the project. But at some point, we kind of need to draw a line in the sand and say, all right, we're done. That piece is done. Things that we want now as part of the school, we'll have to fund in other ways through our budget, town warrant articles, things of that nature, if there are other things that are needed at the school. So we have a document that we're working on that we're prioritizing of ads to the project, some furniture fixtures, some security measures that we've realized since we've been in the building that are, those are really top priority, that we're definitely going to make sure we get funded at the May, with the May meeting. And then we're scheduled to sit with Principal Harding tomorrow and kind of see if we can categorize its list of 83 items right now. And we want to try to categorize those 83 items into kind of more manageable groups for the people on the committee so that we're not asking them to approve 83 individual items. So we could say, all right, these are, you know, necessary for security. These, you know, 10 things are necessary for, you know, better student engagement or however we can categorize them once we sit down and go through that list. So we're going to do that tomorrow and have it prepared for the April meeting as best we can. And then I'd say the final change order will be at the May building committee meeting.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on elementary school building? No. Thank you so much, especially being put on the spot like that. And then Tewksbury CPAC, if we could, Mr. Parsons or Mrs. Bia Joni Smith?
Do you want to go first?
No, you can go.
Okay. So March 30th, me and Ms. Bia Joni Smith attend the CPAC business meeting. We got a chance to hear from School Resource Officer James Reiser, which was very informative about the amount of training and what that training focus is to have a school resource officer in our schools. Because police officers in general do annually 100 hours of continuous training. But if you're going to be in a school that requires an additional 200 hours of specific training just focused on schools and school-aged children. There was a question brought up during the meeting of how much of this training is dedicated specifically for students receiving special education services in our schools. That is now a part of every police officer's training. And then on top of that, school resource officers have even more. He also talked about how the school resource officers in Tewksbury School specifically have the types of relationships and rapport with kids. He said that he could feel confident that if any student was escalating behavior or in any kind of danger, that he would have no doubt that the school resource officers there could manage that. It was just very reassuring to hear from him. I didn't know the background of school resource officers and how much work and time it takes to become one. So that was, it was great to hear. Very comforting. We also heard from elementary principal Terry Garrish about more of in the classroom and the different trainings that general education teachers and special education teachers have. She also discussed how general education teachers can always reach out and collaborate with a BCBA in a student support team. There's also some questions about if a student is escalating their behavior, what kind of process is there in place? It is lengthy to summarize it. But it was good to hear some transparency around what that process involves. We heard from Officer Reiser that in the past, if a student was really in danger to themselves or others, there wasn't many interventions in between that student exhibiting the behavior and then having to be removed from the school by ambulance. But it is completely different now. There's the mindset that schools will do everything they possibly can to intervene so that that type of response isn't warranted. Again, very comforting. It's a lot of steps from student exhibit's behavior to having that kind of drastic of a response to need like an ambulance or some kind of inpatient intervention. We also heard from our, one of our BCBA's, his first name's Kyle, I forgot his last name.
Benson.
Benson, yes. He explained the difference between a cooldown room and a, sorry, a timeout room versus a cooldown space, which was great to hear. He also said that he would do a presentation for parents that is just about de-escalation strategies, timeout rooms, and cooldown spaces in district. It would be the fourth workshop that the BCBA's are putting on for the district. Again, very informative, lots of process, lots of notation, lots of training and preparation for educators, even students themselves, to access these resources and know when to do that and when it's appropriate to do so. So lots of information, and it was, it was good to hear. Also heard just some suggestions to the district of some areas of need. We were advised by the CPAC that there could be more consistency as students transition school to school, getting the special education teachers or parents or whoever is working with our students, school to school, to be able to exchange information to the teacher who will inherit that student when they move. There's also a recommendation and a need for more Tier 1. So that would be for all students to access, and then Tier 2 for students who need a little extra support. There was a communication that we could use more of those T1, T2 supports, but we are ample in T3 supports. Their next business meeting is April 27th.
Okay, thank you. Bia Joni Smith, anything to add?
No, I think that pretty much covers it. The one thing is they are putting together some subcommittees within the CPAC to survey, put together a survey for community members to address rising needs, questions, events that are coming up, and so forth. So any families that are interested can keep an eye out on the Facebook page. The next business meeting, like Mr. Parsons mentioned, is the 27th. But again, keep an eye on the Facebook page for location because it does overlap with opening night here for Beauty and the Beast.
Oh, I think that happened last year, too.
It did, yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments from anybody? And I was going to mention it later, but we will welcome them to our June meeting for a recap. So look forward to that as well. And next, we have our wellness advisory, Mr. Russo.
Yeah, no, our next meeting is scheduled for May 3rd, so no new updates. The only thing maybe I'll just add is Ms. Oregan... The only thing maybe I'll just add is Ms. Regan, I actually owe you an email about, we're just trying to put together some recommendations for additional resources to add to the committee that our wellness policy calls for. And apparently at one point we used to have sort of before the pandemic and we want to sort of get back to that. So I'll forward that email to you later this week and we can have a further conversation if necessary.
Mr. Russo, my only question, has the committee in general considered meeting more frequently? Or kind of?
Yeah, so we
Talk about getting back to, because I can remember a time when they were super active.
Yeah, so there was conversation about that back in our March meeting. I thought I reported on this last month. But so next year, starting for next school year in September, we meet one more time this school year, May 3rd, and then we break for the summer. And then we'll meet back again in September and we are planning on doing every other month versus once a quarter. That was what the committee, at least the initial committee, which was made up of two school committee members, our lead nurse, our director of food services, and we also have a board of health representative as well.
Okay. Any questions from anybody else, comments? Okay. And then next we have policy. At this time, we don't have any policies to present and we haven't met since before the Center Elementary School opened. So I look forward to whoever's on that committee, hopefully being as active as it was last year. So there's a lot of policies to get to. And for some old business, I'll come back to you, Mr. Libby.
Madam Chair, before Mr. Libby speaks, let me just read the memo here. What you have in front of you will require a roll call vote at the request of Business Manager Dave Libby, and he has some supporting documents to share some updates with you. In keeping in line with the town manager's recommended budget for the Tewksbury Public Schools, I am recommending that the school committee approve the fiscal year 24 budget of $54,985,262. Again, it's a required roll call vote after you hear from Mr. Libby.
Thank you very much.
So yeah, this is the basic, well, major change that is represented here was due to the bid opening that we had, bid openings, I should say. One for with our in-district school bus transportation and in-district van transportation. We had a bid opening that was more than our anticipated. We built in a 10% increase, which is more than we normally see year to year. Normally it's a three to five, maybe a 6% increase year over year. And we thought a 10% increase built in would be adequate. But when we got the actual bid, it represented an increase quite a bit more than that. And then we have our shared contract with Doric and Trump for out of district transportation. And that contract also came in higher than anticipated. So I'm speaking with the town manager and the finance, and he went to the finance committee between January and where we are today. They're in, some of their anticipated revenues are looking better than they were in January. So he was able to add the $317,247 that was increased above and beyond our initial increase. Was able to add that to our operating budget to cover those increased contracts. So those, that's the, in my memo, they're shown in red on the updated column. Under our operating budget would be an increase to $15,504,896. And other than that, the other numbers are pretty much the same and have been reviewed a few times since January.
Any questions on the budget?
No, looked at it enough.
I agree.
Yes, and very, we're very fortunate that the finance committee in the town supports education the way it does here in Tewksbury.
Ms. Anderson, any questions?
No.
Okay, so I don't actually have that sheet.
The memo?
Yeah, the memo is not included in this. If you have, I could use just to Thank you very much. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the final budget of $54,985,262?
Yes, so moved, I will make that motion.
And is there a second?
I have a second.
From Mr. Parsons. So for a roll call vote, how do you vote, Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well to approve the final budget in the total amount of $54,985,262 to go to town meeting. That's written, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, Mr. Libby.
Very well.
And Mrs. Terry O'Regan.
It's a pleasure working with Davis, our business manager. I don't have to tell you that. I mean, we, he's so thorough and thoughtful in ways that we, you know, need him to be constantly balancing from capital projects to staffing and how we can get the job done in the best interest of kids. So I thank you to Mr. Libby for your work. All right. We're good to go on the next item in old business. What we have in front of you here is informational only, no vote is required. The following is the draft of the 2024 School Committee Meeting Calendar. Again, no vote is required, but given to you for your consideration as we think forward to our scheduling of school committee meetings. This is, I think this will be very helpful for you as well, Ms. Anderson. Get all of these in your calendar. At times, there's a tweak to the schedule, but we wanted to make sure everyone had that. I think what you also see, Madam Chair, like this year, there are two. Due to your recommendation, I think it's a good one, two May meetings so that we can put so many of these department updates and important things that happen in our district in the, in two meetings rather than try to jam it into one very long one.
Okay. I think I wanted to also, as a committee, just have a, we could have a brief conversation or this could be something that maybe we think on and come back next meeting. But to just look at this, I think it's worth reflecting. Are we meeting often enough for the amount of business that we are covering? We're looking at nine o'clock now and I feel like we've covered really substantial topics. I don't, I don't think that we're wasting a lot of time in our meetings. So this might be a personal preference that we like to keep our meetings the way that we're doing them. Or is this something that maybe in some of the heavier months, we could consider a couple of different things? Adding like we did the extra May meeting, maybe taking out or siphoning out some of our things that are substance, like maybe some of the budget workshops could be separate from our business meeting. Maybe our superintendent review could be separate from the business meeting where those are smaller meetings that kind of take place separately but have the same substance and would maybe have an impact on the length of our meetings. Because I personally like having the recognitions that we do, especially at the end of the school year. I like learning about what's happening in the schools from some of our educators that are doing the work. So I like bringing those people into the meetings. I don't, I wouldn't want to change that, is my personal preference. But certainly it's the pleasure of the board that I would, you know, defer to. So, you know, our January meeting kind of went long. We had some really long meetings. So this doesn't have to be something we talk about now. It could be something you kind of tell me personally what your thoughts are and then we re-propos a schedule or we go with the schedule here.
Madam Chair, in addition to not pulling anything out, I think on the flip side, you also get the opportunity to possibly bring more things in. Like you've mentioned, the potential to hear from students more often, giving them the opportunity to come forward, opening up some of our meetings. If we're going to have some shorter ones for more presentations from maybe schools or, you know, maybe it's one each quarter that we get to hear from, giving the different schools that we have in town. But I do like the opportunity to maybe shorten some of these and also add the extra meetings so that we can talk to more people.
Yeah, I guess maybe from my perspective, I would maybe add that, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to judge the length of our meetings based on one or two meetings either. I mean, we had a, you know, a particularly heavy section tonight and it's something that we have been putting off for multiple months because other things have taken priority or not priority, but just have gotten in the way, maybe is a better way to say it. You know, so I, I do, I think that there are a couple dates on here that maybe I can talk with you offline and maybe about trying to figure out what maybe works best for, you know, all folks, I suppose. But I would be more of a fan of putting together sort of smaller meetings for the purpose of a particular item, i.e. the presentation that Ms. Regan gave tonight on the CDA report, the superintendent review, whatever may be a heavier topic, let's say, that maybe should carry its own weight of a meeting potentially.
Okay. That is definitely what some of my thoughts were. Anything on your end?
Comfortable with our, how we're conducting meetings now. Once a month, I think, works well, even if it goes long here and there. Is it possible to maybe put in a couple extra, I don't want to call them like a float meeting, but just have some placeholder type meetings that if we need them, use them. And if not, they're on the calendar if we don't need them for anything.
I think that's a great idea. I think it feels like it might be a little easier sometimes to maybe cancel a meeting than it is to, you know, surprises the community. And then also, I think, just logistically getting us all together. And then also, I know how much work goes into the preparation for these meetings. I know what we do when we, you know, read through the materials. But I think the preparation of putting the materials together is a heavy lift too. So I think the input from administration is important. So I, you know, welcome your thoughts as well.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Sometimes these busiest months are harder to put together more meetings, right? I mean, the work is the work, but we certainly entertain flexibility. You know, I even mentioned there may be opportunity during vacation weeks or that we have some day meetings where we're not keeping people out late if it's a specific presentation or even, you know, I just talked with a colleague and they did their comprehensive district review and entry findings on Saturday. And I thought, wow. And they said, well, we really did not want, they wanted to do that separate than the regular business meeting. I'm only saying, I think we can remain flexible and think about it, but you're right. More meetings mean maybe that we're not able to, you know, get as bulky information. So let's think about what's necessary rather than number of meetings.
Okay.
I would appreciate that.
All right, so maybe we could individually, are you, are you all comfortable? Because I don't, we already have our meetings planned through. I mean, this is really starting to look at January next year and maybe any changes we want to make through this year. So to just kind of think this through a little and come back to next month with kind of some more solid thoughts. I mean, I'll look at the dates a little bit better too. I'll work with Mrs. Johnson to look at maybe the last two or three years of agendas to kind of see, is there some pattern where we're heavier in certain months for different reasons? And we know the end of the year, May and June are just super heavy.
The TFM is going to come up. That might be an opportunity, like that is definitely going to be a report that we're going to want to share. We have some preliminary data that's really positive, but that we're going to want to share. That may be one where we think about that as a separate opportunity.
I think that's why I like Rich's or Mr. Russo's idea about if there's certain topics that we think are going to take longer, then we, then we use that time to put out a separate meeting out there.
Yeah, I guess the only thing, as you're saying that, to your point, Bridget, if we know about a certain thing, like the superintendent review happens every year in July, I believe.
July.
July, right. The budget we know happens January, February, March. And I am a fan of separating the budget hearing from our meeting just so we can sort of avoid certain occurrences. But I, I, there may be some things, especially if we're on an audit of some sorts that is unplanned, right? Like we're planning out, what, you know, 17, no, 20 months from now, right? And so that's a, that's a long ways to go without, you know, there may be things, unforeseen things that come up that are not sort of regular recurring events that we typically see every year. So
Brings to point Mr. Parsons' float idea, which is a great idea.
So maybe, maybe every other month a float or something like that. So let me, I'll circle back with Mrs. Johnson to kind of look at historical stuff and then maybe come back with another proposal of some of these different ideas.
Is the plan to vote this in for next month?
Well, it's a no vote.
It's a no vote.
It's just a, you know, for information, but certainly with our consent. Like if any, you know, you know, going on a family vacation, let's kind of work around it. Or just, you know. I mean, it's not set in stone either. I think we have the ability to make changes, you know, that pleases the board. But I think just looking ahead and thinking about, you know, some of our business and how we're handling it. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Terry O'Regan. And then also under new business.
So in front of you, this next item in new business is the last day of school for this school year, which will require a roll call vote. The Tewksbury Public Schools 22, 23 school calendar included five snow days with an anticipated last day of school on June 23rd, 2023. During the 22, 23 school year, there was one snow day on January 20th, 2023. It is the recommendation of the superintendent for the last day of school to be on Friday, June 16th, 2023. That will be an early release schedule and the early release times for each of our schools is listed below. Again, this will require a roll call vote.
Any questions, comments?
Just one real quick comment. I need a calculator for counting the last day of school when there's snow days because the number of times that that question comes up is to when the last day of school is. I don't know, maybe a, maybe a workshop. That question comes up so often, about when the last day is and you kind of have to do it backwards. But that's all I wanted to say. It's just a, I hate that calculation. So I would like to make a motion to approve the last day of school as mentioned by Ms. Terry O'Regan.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, a second by Mr. Russo to approve the final school day is Friday, June 16th, 2023. All in favor, please say aye. Roll call vote, sorry. Mrs. Anderson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well for unanimous vote.
Wonderful. Okay. And the next item on new business will also require a roll call vote. As you know, annually, the inter-district school choice law requires districts to accept incoming school choice students unless the school committee votes not to participate. The school committee is required to take an annual vote. Superintendent is required to notify the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education of the action taken by the school committee. This notification must be electronically submitted prior to June 1st. I am recommending that the school committee vote not to participate in the school choice program. I'm offering this recommendation in consideration of the following reasons. The continued work associated with the construction of the Center Elementary School, the uncertainty of continued operation of our schools, potential staffing adjustments. I'm adding a couple others, and maintaining our lower class sizes at our lower grade level schools.
Any questions or comments? Okay, and do we have a motion to approve?
Yes, I'll make that motion to approve the no call, the roll call vote for school choice on the Tewksbury Public School District.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Russo and a second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith to take the superintendent's recommendation to not participate this year in school choice program. Mrs. Anderson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. And thank you for your thoughts on that. Okay, and then school committee matters of interest. Does anybody have anything to share, add, mention, shout outs?
Just wanted, you might have it too. I just want to thank the junior class and their representatives for inviting us to the junior prom. Ms. Garbidi and I made an appearance. It was beautiful. Everyone looked wonderful. They, I'm sure, had a wonderful time that night and it was great to be there. I haven't been to junior prom in a very long time, so. But it was great to be there.
Yes, it was, it was very nice.
That's all.
Okay. Anything from anybody else?
I decided to forego the embarrassment of my children. So I decided to forego that event.
Anything else?
I hope we get invited to the senior prom.
I hope we get invited to the senior prom.
No other matters.
My comment is I would like to be invited to, if I can be presumptuous, to the senior project when they present those.
Yes.
I would love to attend that, I think that would be for all of us, I think a really nice opportunity.
Madam Chair, on that note, I hope the committee has been, you received the sharing of the, we're trying to at least make it easy for you to know when those end-of-year events are, so if you haven't seen me after the meeting, make sure that you have that grid to define those, but yes, we'll make sure.
Thank you, that just sounds great. And then also, I wanted to mention the Massachusetts Association of School Committees is having a day on the Hill, May 4th, which is promoting legislative advocacy for school committee members with our legislative delegation. I know Ms. Bea Joni Smith and I have both registered already. If anybody else is still interested, please let Mrs. Johnson know, and she will register you as well. I have reached out to our legislators to let them know that at least some contingency of us will be there. I also wanted to mention that tomorrow is the deadline for the Chrissy Palomino Educator of the Year Award and the Ginsberg Family Award. So, if anybody wants any more information on that, please feel free to call central office, the superintendent's office should have more information. I think that's just the easiest way for people to get information, but I'm really looking forward to that this year. I hope we have some, some great people to honor at the end of the year. And then, I also wanted to mention, oh, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I learned today that Mr. Parsons has volunteered as the MIAA School Committee Representative on cross-country, which is fantastic. And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith has volunteered on their subcommittee on special education. So, I'm, I'm proud of our committee for participating and much as we're doing outside of just what you see us do here. And that's it, do we have a motion? Wait, is that it?
Nope.
Future meetings?
Oh, future meetings, I'm sorry. Future school committee meetings, May 10th, 2023 is our regular meeting, May 17th, 2023 is the school committee training and workshop, May 31st is our regular meeting, and June 14th will also be a regular meeting. And then, future subcommittee advisory committee dates, Elementary School Building Committee meets on April 27th, the CPAC business meeting, as you mentioned, is also April 27th, and the Wellness Advisory Committee on May 3rd, and Policy Subcommittee is to be determined. Any future agenda items that anybody is interested in?
No.
Nope.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, a second by Mr. Russo. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And be adjourned at 9:08 PM.